States of America, in due republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Number two.
Changes the order of agenda? Mr. Weiss?
The only thing that I would suggest is that we take the item N under the consent calendar and move it to the end as a new business item for discussion.
So we will take six, six N and make it after 10B?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else? Changes the order of agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I was curious, items 10A and B seem that they could be disposed of fairly quickly and we've got a public hearing coming up. I was curious if we may be able to move 10A and B before item eight?
Okay, Mr. Grokot?
Just one item for the mayor's attention and the rest of the councils. I think I'd already reported that we did come up with a JPA agreement with the ALS JPA. That's the ambulance service and our fire engines. And we're going to need to agendize that at our next meeting, so just to be aware of that.
Okay. Mr. Weiss, I think you were at the meeting today and you're...
I just wasn't sure whether it was the next meeting or the second meeting in June.
What were we going to do with the next, the second meeting because of the fact that the Fire Board was going to hear it on the 10th?
The Fire Board will hear it on the 10th, yeah.
And then we were going to bring it back to us on the 22nd, I think.
I think that's right.
Yeah. That's what I understood.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Grokot?
That's it.
Mr. Royce?
Nothing.
Just two things. Number one, I'd like to congratulate Lynda Touchele and her staff and all the volunteers for Hometown Days, which I think was a rollicking success and had great weather again this year. Thank God it wasn't this past weekend. And again, shows the community spirit that we have coming out in San Carlos. I was there on Saturday and briefly on Sunday and there were just lots and lots of people there. And I think everybody was having a good time, so another great, great thing that we have in the city of San Carlos. The other thing I'd like to announce is before the meeting, we interviewed five people for the Transportation and Circulation Commission and the council selected two people to serve three-year terms, Frank Adiego and Simon Foster. So those two folks will be serving three-year terms on our Traffic and Circulation Commission. Okay, moving on, item four. Foray: Presentation or proclamation to Michael Toto Grande, Troop 301, upon receiving his Eagle Scout. So, Mr. Toto Grande, if you want to come up to the podium there. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Toto Grande, good. Congratulations. What we usually do is, I won't read this because it's basically where it asks, but we congratulate you on reaching the Eagle Scout Award. We congratulate you on reaching the Eagle Scout Award, the highest award in scouting. And what we usually ask you is, just to give us a couple of minutes of where you go to school and what project you did. If you can speak to the microphone, that'd be great.
Microphone. Microphone. So, Michael Toto Grande from Troop 301, out of Belmont, not actually here in San Carlos. I go to University of Sarah High School. I'll be graduating this Saturday, which will be tremendous. For my project, I decided to organize and do all of the planning and whatnot for a blood drive, which I held in October of last year in Belmont at the Safeway on Rolson. And what we did was, we essentially sat there for six hours and pretty much moved the people through the whole process, getting their paperwork done, drawing blood, all that fun stuff. And we got enough blood to help 117 people. So it was pretty much a success.
Thank you, Mike. Great. Michael indicated that he's going to be going on to Cal Poly after Sarah, so congratulations also on that. Okay, moving on. Our next item is public comment. Persons wishing to address the City Council for matters not on the posted agenda. This is the time to do that. Is there anyone here wishing to make public comment? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to item six. Consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Mr. Weiss has already moved six N to the end of the meeting, which is our usual process. Are there any other items that people would like to move? Or should I say remove from the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Item six J.
Six J, okay. Anyone else? Any other items?
And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move six L.
Six L, okay. Any other items?
Mr. Mayor, just not a removal, but a slight correction to six C, the minutes of April 27th, page four. I have a vote wrong. It should be Councilmember Royce voted no, not Councilmember Grokot. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Boland. With that correction, do I hear a motion for the other items on the consent calendar?
So I would move an approval of items A through I and item K and M.
Right, moved in second. And to approve those items on the consent calendar, any more discussion on those items? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. All right. So move six J, six L, and to join, six N at the back of the meeting. All right. Moving on. Number seven, reports to council. Reports to council are updates on key city projects by city department heads and staff and city council subcommittees. They are informational in nature and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Seven A is an update on public outreach program and review of options, general fund balance, pardon me, general fund budget deficit and potential revenue measure. Mr. Moore?
Yes, thank you. Brian Moore, Assistant City Manager. As council will recall, last August, the council approved a recommendation from the Council Revenue Committee, which is Mayor Griselli and Councilmember Lewis, to move ahead with a public outreach and discussion of options on the city's ongoing general fund budget problems. We've been working on this since January and as the staff report notes, in March, we gave the council their last update on this project. Since that time, a number of tasks have been completed. The consultants, Tramitol LLC, have interviewed a number of city employees from the key different departments that have been affected by budget cuts. We've also developed a couple of flyers that have gone out in the community and on the city website. There was an informal survey that was conducted earlier this month. We had great response to that. There were over 820 responses to that survey. In addition, on May 12 and 13, we held two community workshops at the library. The first day had 85 attendees, the second 60, so we had over 140 people at those two events. Some of the interesting things in the informal survey that we learned were that police, fire services, as well as streets, were the top priorities for the community with maintaining the current level of park and rec services and landscape and parks closely behind. There wasn't as much support in the so-called structured questions for park and recreation enhancements. However, interestingly, when we got to the unstructured questions where residents were allowed to comment on any topic of interest, the vast majority of those comments did in fact deal with park and rec services and enhancements, including things such as playing fields, tennis courts, hiking trails, summer concerts, the youth center, and things that you'd find in the park master plan. As far as future steps in this process, we will be doing some continued outreach in the next month or two using an abbreviated version of the PowerPoint presentation that occurred earlier this month to various service clubs and others that have expressed interest, along with the Chamber of Commerce. And then in June, we intend to once again conduct a formal phone-based survey of the community to see community attitudes regarding a potential revenue measure and in particular, at this point, continued focus on either a utility user tax or sales taxes, the most likely candidates. We did have a couple of comments from individuals about other revenue options, particularly the income tax, interestingly, came up a couple of times, but at this point, it would appear that the two options that we surveyed last year are probably the most likely candidates to be surveyed again. So those are some of the highlights and certainly be happy to answer any questions the council might have at this point about that process.
Questions for Mr. Moore? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Brian, very much. Item seven B. Receive report on the state of the streets.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'll try to be very brief. Overall, the value of the city's 86 and a half mile street network is $179 million. That's the replacement cost for the asset. And in an average basis, it's in a fair condition. It receives a rating of 64 and a half out of 100. To keep that asset at its current condition would require about $1.1 million a year. In the past year and this year, the '08, '09, $300,000 was budgeted and in '09, '10, $650,000 was budgeted. So to keep, at this level of investment, the streets will gradually decline. Right now, San Carlos is 12th out of 21 agencies in San Mateo County and 70th out of 107 agencies overall in the Bay Area. The strategy for maintaining, managing your pavement asset is actually to not do your worst streets, but to do those that are kind of on the borderline and are at risk of going off this depreciation curve. So whereas you get a lot of complaints about the streets that are really gone, your money's better spent on the streets that are about to go. And so you've got some charts in here that illustrate that concept and doing timely pavement rehabilitation is the technique that's recommended. So as you consider the capital budget, you know, this is what we can put into our streets this year. We do have a gas tax balance of about $600,000. You could invest that in the streets right now. We've recommended in the capital budget to just keep that basically in reserve in case there's some major transportation-related need for it. Again, as Assistant City Manager Moore mentioned, the streets are high on the list of things people look for, but with the financial straits right now, the money that you would put in the streets has really had to go on the general fund. So with that, I'll conclude my report and be glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Mr. Malp, Mr. Grokot, Mr. Royce?
Robert, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Welcome. We'll be talking to you later, I'm sure. All right. Moving on, item eight, public hearing. Consideration of adopting a resolution amending the current cost of services fee schedule and adopting guidelines for future cost of services increases. Mr. Malp.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Jeff Malp, Administrative Services Director. Here tonight to make the bulk of the presentation is Jeanette Hawn from MBS. As you'll recall, the City Council authorized the city to enter into a contract with MBS last October. Since then, they've been doing work with my department as well as all the departments in the city to prepare a comprehensive fee analysis. This is something that we do every several years in depth, so it's a little bit larger process this year than we've done the last couple with the City Council, but the end result, which is before you tonight, is a presentation of recommended city fees, those current levels of those city fees, examples of what the full cost recovery for those fees would be, as well as a market analysis. So hopefully after tonight, we'll have direction from the City Council on the fees specifically, any changes that you'd like to make, and where we go from here. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeanette Hawn.
Thank you, Mr. Malp. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to see you again. I'm here tonight to, with my colleague Terry Madsen of MBS, to represent the analytical justification for the proposed master fee schedule that you have in front of you. Actually, I have a presentation here that I open. As I mentioned, you're looking at a citywide master fee schedule. There are several versions of it in the documents that you saw, some of which where you can see the maximum cost of service that we've been able to justify in our work with the departments. Compare next to the current fee and the proposed fee. This is a master fee schedule that is proposed for implementation for the upcoming fiscal year 2009, 2010. We performed a cost of service study with the city in order to justify the ceiling, which is the cost of service that justifies the fees that are proposed. The fees that we are looking at in this study are fees that we call user fees or regulatory fees. User fees meaning that the city is providing a service to an individual or an entity upon request. It's a discretionary service, it's not a mandate. Or regulatory fees, which again are statutorily considered discretionary services, but they are performed because an individual or an entity is causing the city to do something within its regulatory power, its local police power to protect public health and safety within the community. So these fees are not incidences of property ownership, they are not Prop 218 fees, these are not development impact fees that you might understand that fall under what we call AB 1600 informally, the Mitigation Fee Act. These are fees that are within your power to consider and adopt, revise, or whatever's necessary. The limit that we have on these fees is that they are not to exceed the estimated reasonable cost of providing the service or performing the activity. In setting the master fee schedule, we perform a cost of service analysis, which I'm going to discuss very briefly. The second phase of that is to then consider of the cost of service, how much should we recover in the fees? And the final phase of that analysis then is to say, based on the cost of service, based on the amount that we want to recover, what do we actually want to set as the fee in terms of its amount, in terms of its structure, how it applies, when it doesn't apply, essentially dealing with the equity and proportionality of the fee to the best of our ability. So we talk a lot within the analysis about what we call the full cost of service. And the full cost of service is made up of several components. At its core, we have labor costs, as most of the activities and the services that we're looking at really have somebody here at the city behind the actual action itself. There is effort going into that based on, human effort going into that. So we're looking at documented salary benefits and other labor-related costs. We also look at non-labor costs, which are the supplies and materials that might go into the effort or provision for that, also possibly amortized periodic needs that may not necessarily be in a single annual budget, but that are very necessary that you invest in periodically as the backbone or supportive in nature to the services or activities that we're looking at. We also, in some areas, look at what we call indirect services, which are activities that are performed by staff while not directly involved with specifically responding to an individual or entity, whether it's an applicant or a service or an action that's being caused, are very necessary to the ability to provide those services. As an example of that, in parks and recreation, you are maintaining facilities or maintaining park sites as a general rule, that you're not actually going out and say mowing the grass when somebody comes in, but the very act that you are periodically mowing the grass at a park side is indirect and is part of your ability to provide those services. Another example of that might be the very involved public assistance efforts that you go into throughout your various phases of development, review, and approval. And finally, part of the full cost of service is obviously overhead. And overhead encompasses the general administrative requirements of the particular function you might be looking at, departmental administration. It also looks at citywide support services, things like payroll, budgeting, information technology, and citywide administration and oversight. In fact, your time as well, or a provision for your time in overseeing some of these functions. So how do we express the full cost of service? For most of the activities we're looking at, I would say more than 95% of the activities we're looking at, again, labor is the fundamental nexus, if you will, that sizes a fee. Something that is a $5 fee and something that is a $2,000 fee, the fundamental difference in that is the amount of effort that the city is expending to perform that service or respond to the activity. So at its core, a cost of service analysis values time, places a value on a unit of time that the city is expending across the various functions that might get involved in these services or activities. So fundamentally, we craft what's called a fully burdened hourly labor rate, which is a cost per hour of the functional labor time involved in the activity. And that cost is made up of the various cost components I just talked about on the prior slide. We then take that fully burdened hourly rate and we apply it against an estimate of time it takes to perform a service. That is exactly what I said in estimate, in that there is a degree of subjectivity in this analysis. We here in the city and, you know, across almost all the cities we work with, do not track time at that tiny little level of detail that you would need in order to, you know, really look at a large database of time estimates. So we go through a process in the cost of service analysis to work with the departments to estimate time, to estimate time globally, to estimate time down at the service level. And we've been going through a process of forms and estimation that we've honed with other agencies, very similar to what is done in the industry to support fees in many agencies in this area. So we apply an hourly rate times a time estimate. We add to that any specific, very discrete costs that might be incurred, which I can get into when we get into some of the departments, and we come up with a full unit cost of service. So this is an average cost of service that we believe represents the ceiling that you could possibly pass through and impose as a fee, the estimated reasonable cost of providing the service. As I mentioned earlier, the costs that we use as a basis in this analysis are those that are documented here at the city. They are a part of adopted financial records and budgets that you approve every year as a part of your legislative oversight. That's a really important thing for me to say because we have so little guidance in the statute as to what is and can be the basis of the cost. Estimated and reasonable are the words that we have. Estimated is obviously because we're taking costs and estimated time estimates. I tend to define reasonable as something that is legislatively adopted by a body of individuals representing the citizens here and that through your actions and the adoption of budgets, you in a sense define what is reasonable in terms of the cost structure here in the city. So when we define the full cost of service, as I mentioned briefly, that does represent the ceiling, which you can impose. And as a consultant, that really is the end of my analytical work. Our job is not to force that maximum cost of service on you, but to document it, to defend it, to justify it, and say this is what you can impose. So we can certainly say, here's a cost of service, and compare that against your current fee level, which in many cases is less than what we can define as a cost of service ceiling. What that means is that the difference between your current fee for any particular activity and our ceiling represents an amount that you are in effect subsidizing. That's an activity, as I mentioned early on, that's discretionary, that is a service that you're providing because somebody's requesting it, or an activity that you're conducting because somebody is doing something that causes you to perform extra activity. In most cases, the amount of that subsidy, my word, really comes from your general resources, the general resources of this community, which are your general fund tax revenues. So what we can really say here is, in a fee schedule, we've priced out some activities where you're actually not currently imposing a fee. That means your current cost recovery is 0%. The maximum cost recovery that you can have would be 100%, so all fees need to fall less than or at that amount. So that's certainly part of the study is calibrating the costs of certain activities or the fees for certain activities to these costs. And then your targeted cost recovery level can be somewhere in between. So we do talk a lot about percentage cost recovery and that is the inherent meaning behind those. Once the cost of service are analytically justified, we do acknowledge that, you know, charging the full cost of service, that maximum, is not necessarily what you have to do. We recognize that within certain departments who implement these fees and we recognize at a citywide level that there could be very good and justified policy reasons why you would impose something less than that. Obviously, you know, I'm comfortable saying this because you're not alone in this area and frankly, in the state of California, that, you know, this fee study is being done at a time of great financial crisis for the public sector. And certainly, fee studies are being done to make sure that resources are being optimized. Because we're talking about discretionary services provided to individuals, agencies around the state are looking at options available to them to make sure that the general resources of the agency are available to serve the general needs, activities that have general broad benefit to the community. So that's obviously consideration in setting fees. If you need to go lower than that, in other words, not impose the full cost of service, some rationale rationales for doing so might be sort of your gut feel on the public versus private benefits of the services provided. You know, of all of the activities listed in that master fee schedule, do you legislatively believe that those are really providing predominantly private benefit to an individual? In which case, that might argue for, you know, more, closer to full cost recovery if not full cost? Or does that activity protect the public in some way? In which case, that might argue for something less than full cost recovery, that both the public at large and the private individual or entity are chipping in for that service. Other policy considerations that certainly can come into play in your decision-making and have been considered as well by the departments might be other goals, priorities, and values that you have that would be adversely impacted, possibly by fee increases, or just argue for some level of general subsidy. Other considerations that I know for a fact have been taken under consideration are compliance achievement. Are we going to create compliance issues by raising a particular fee? Is there a public good to having some of these activities in place? And do we not want to necessarily discourage those and create bigger problems for ourselves? Sometimes fees are also used as behavior modifications. And some of the structural changes that have taken place in this master fee schedule, some of that is also about just making sure that people aren't abusing the system. A good example being unnecessary plan reviews, just not having their act together and having their plans in place when they come to the counter. So making sure that we're defining in the fee schedule a little bit better what you're getting for the fee that's being imposed. We're not looking at fines and penalties. That's not something that you are limited to the cost of service, but fees can act in similar ways to fines and penalties. And so that's certainly been considered in the way that the fees have been proposed to be structured, where there have been changes. You also can obviously consider impacts on the demand for services. This comes into play predominantly in parks and recreation. By raising fees, do we actually work against ourselves and end up serving a smaller population and possibly taking less revenue? I can't answer that. I don't think anybody can until you have experience, but it's certainly a consideration. So the services that we looked at here cover, most of the departments here in the city, just kind of going in order of magnitude here, community development, which covers the full range of development, review, and approval, from planning to building inspection, plan review. We're also looking at parks and recreation, the use of facilities and your provision of recreational programs, public works-related fees with respect to maintenance, but also engineering as it relates to, again, development, review, and approval. We also took into account some of the fees imposed by the police department, as well as some various administrative fees. Some general notes I'd like to make about the master fee schedule are that you might have seen that we have sprinkled throughout each of the sections, the fully burdened hourly rates that were used as the basis for the fee. And that's important. I definitely don't want to hide that because one of the things that we are asking in the proposed master fee schedule is to say, you know, a fee schedule cannot contemplate absolutely everything that might come up in an agency. We certainly do our best based on past experience to cover all the services and activities that you have, but certainly weird things can come along like filming, as an example, where you can't just set a fee in anticipation of a commercial being filmed or a movie being filmed. You need to have the ability to negotiate cost recovery for activities that end up requiring a large degree of staff time. By putting fully burdened hourly rates in the master fee schedule, we are asking you to... the full range of development review and approval, from planning to building inspection, plan review. We're also looking at parks and recreation, the use of facilities and your provision of recreational programs, public works-related fees with respect to maintenance, but also engineering as it relates to, again, development review and approval. We also took into account some of the fees imposed by the police department, as well as some various administrative fees. Some general notes I'd like to make about the master fee schedule are that you might have seen that we have sprinkled throughout each of the sections, the fully burdened hourly rates that were used as the basis for the fee. And that's important. I definitely don't want to hide that because one of the things that we are asking in the proposed master fee schedule is to say, you know, a fee schedule cannot contemplate absolutely everything that might come up in an agency. We certainly do our best based on past experience to cover all the services and activities that you have, but certainly weird things can come along like filming, as an example, where you can't just set a fee in anticipation of a commercial being filmed or a movie being filmed. You need to have the ability to negotiate cost recovery for activities that end up requiring a large degree of staff time. By putting fully burdened hourly rates in the master fee schedule, we are asking you to adopt that as a mechanism for cost recovery so that at the discretion of either the department head involved in that or the city manager, cost recovery can be negotiated for those things, again, that are discretionary in nature. Another sort of highlight of the fee schedule that may not have been apparent in fee schedules passed is that you'll see a higher degree of use of the words "actual costs." There are a lot of these activities, particularly in the development review and approval area, where external expertise is used, outside consultants are used to provide very core services. Those rates that you pay could fluctuate either based on the service provider or based on the nature of the specific project that is before you, and therefore, your consultant is negotiating that. In order to not jeopardize the city's cost recovery, we have set in the fee schedule what the fee might be or actual cost. Again, the director of the department would have then that discretion to negotiate that with the applicant. And then, finally, I believe that the resolution in front of you also allows for annual inflationary adjustments to these fees so that as you move forward in subsequent years, you can raise the fees moderately with an administrative function based on an index such as Consumer Price Index and keep them at pace so that the fees don't fall behind as costs change.
Excuse me, do you have a lot more?
You know, I'm happy to, it's actually a good break because I was going to give you highlights of each of the departments, but I understand that you've gone through that, the fee schedule, and probably have questions. So, I would be happy to stop there and take the questions.
That'd be great. Thank you. And if we need more information, we'll certainly ask you to go over the rest of the things. Thank you. Mr. Ahmad, you have any questions?
I have one, Mr. Mayor. In Section 2.2, Parks and Recreation Services, you have an Exhibit 2C describing the fully burdened hourly rates. I apologize for not getting this question to you, so this may be something you can get to me, but in terms of, I'm just looking at part-time park, the fully burdened rate is about $100 an hour, even though the direct labor cost is $1,895. So, you've got $51 bucks of nonlabor in there. Looking at some of the other departments, $13, $8. So, I would just appreciate some detail of how that was put together. I don't know if that's an appropriate description.
I can give you that answer because your staff actually prepared me with that question. So, when we calculate the fully burdened hourly rate, obviously, we're assuming that labor is the sort of core nexus, that what we're essentially having to do is say, something that takes, you know, 10 hours more than something else, it's labor that's sizing that. So, we have to accept that there's proportionality among different costs of service, among different activities, based on labor. On top of labor, then, we add in provisions for nonlabor costs and overhead. Within certain departments, the nature of the costs, the nature of the operations themselves are incredibly capital-intensive or materials-intensive. You see this in parks and parks maintenance, and you see this in police as well, where the nonlabor costs are a pretty big component, more so than functions that are more office-oriented, where if you think about the nonlabor portions of the budget, there's not a whole lot of, you know, external costs outside of, say, a desk and computers and sort of office functions. In parks maintenance, what we're doing is putting a provision on top of the hourly rate for the actual maintenance itself. So, if you think about the function of parks maintenance, it's requiring equipment, it's requiring vehicles, it's requiring utilities. And that is why we price out the time functionally. So, a parks maintenance person and the small amount of time that they spend in a parks and recreation activity is carrying with them that sort of larger, more capital-intensive nature of their ability to provide services. You see this in police as well. It's easier to envision in police. If you think about a sworn, a police officer generally has a vehicle coming with that body. That requires more maintenance, a larger share of the cost. It's maybe not as pronounced because labor costs are a little bit higher there, but that's really the distinction in the nonlabor costs is that provision for the just different types of materials and services that go into providing a parks maintenance function as opposed to, say, a recreation function that's more office-intensive.
So, again, I'll request a greater detail on that because I'm looking at, yeah, again, the nonlabor portion of part-time parks is roughly, you know, 2 1/2 X of the labor cost, but you mentioned law enforcement, it's about 25% of the labor cost. So, if you're doing depreciations or something else, I don't want to take up time from the dais in this, but would love some greater detail just to understand. Sorry, y'all.
Okay. Mr. Growcott.
Well, I had, first of all, I'd say, you know, having read through or briefed through most or the whole book, I then concentrated on community development because it's an area that I work in and took most interest in and so forth.
And those are the fees that somebody's going to have to pay.
That's right.
Exactly.
And I have a similar question, if not, it might even be the same as Mr. Ahmad. I was having difficulty, I could see that in community development, there are certain areas where you can identify almost the hourly rate, and it seemed to be $226 per hour. And I was looking back in these other sections where you're showing labor costs and so on and so forth, and I just, I couldn't come up with how you arrived at 226.
Sure.
I don't know if I want to wait as Mr. Ahmad does or not because it seems like that figure is pretty dominant in how everything else was figured out for the fees that are charged from community development.
I can give you a brief answer and if it doesn't feel like.
I know the mayor would appreciate the brief answer.
Brief answer, I love brief answers, yeah.
In the building and planning function, we follow a methodology that essentially creates a billable rate for those functions. I use the word "billable," that's like the private sector. What that means is that those functions predominantly exist to review and approve development. If you, I mean, another way to put is, if you don't have development, I suppose you don't need to have those functions. So, what we're essentially saying is that there are direct and indirect hours performed by building and planning. Direct means that's the time that they're actually spending on active projects and cases that come in the door. And those tend to be just a fraction of their available time, you know, anywhere from 40 to, say, 65% of their available time. The rest of their time is what we consider indirect. A lot of that is dealing with establishing their codes, policies, practice, practices, making sure that their ordinances are up to date, things that they have to do in order to provide adequate and efficient development review, but aren't directly related to a project that comes in the door. So, essentially, what we're doing by creating that little bit larger hourly rate is that we are layering on a variety of indirect activities that are very necessary to development review as overhead. One of the overhead functions that we looked at was long-range planning. The planning division spends a significant amount of time in long-range planning, which is essentially the general plan itself. And we specifically removed that so that it is not directly in play in that hourly rate. We've also specifically removed time that they spend in the punitive side of code enforcement. Again, it's sort of part of their function in reviewing development or being sort of your development experts here, but that is not appropriate in the cost of service basis that you would impose on somebody who's actually paying a fee, who's actually in compliance. But essentially, it is a billable rate. So, we essentially take the costs of the function, removing things that we don't believe are appropriate for layering into the fee, and then expressing those per hour of billable time. And that represents the ceiling that we believe could be justified. The time that they spend on direct services, the time that they spend helping people navigate the code, helping people conceptualize their projects, these are all things that are related to development review, but not necessarily to something coming in the door, but are necessary to having people here as your experts. So, it's a billable rate. I don't know if that, I keep saying that, but I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, that helps some. The reason it came to mind is because it looked like even the hourly rate as far as labor, actually with most departments, it hovered around $70, between 70 and 80. There was a, you know, administrative column in the community services department that looked like it was coming in around $100 an hour. So, to go from even at 100 up to 226 seemed rather like a big jump. But I accept your explanation, and I guess what you're saying to us too is then, when we look at these fees, well, we can bill that full 226, or if we feel like it's a little heavy-handed, we can come down off of that.
That's right. We represent it as the ceiling.
As the ceiling.
So, I believe 226 per hour for, say, a planning function, which are, when you do that in other agencies and not just many other service providers as well, they tend to price out around that range because of the high degree of complexity, high degree of nonbillable time. The planning functions tend to have, just by nature of being your sort of planning experts here in the community. But that's right, that it's a ceiling.
Okay. Couple other questions. And on page four of 35, for the other council members, of the fee schedule, there's, I was looking at the building permits for, you know, $1 to $2,000 and then $2,001 to $25,000, et cetera. And then, I did a quick calculation, okay? So, for example, on the $2,001 to $25,000 building permit fee, that would come out, if you apply the math over here, of $164 for the first 2,000 plus $15 per each additional thousand, up to $25,000. I came up with 509 max. And then, you jump to the next one at $25,001. If you're at $25,001, you're going to pay 505, slightly less. So, my point is, and I didn't go through and check the rest of them, but it's not seamless. You know what I mean by seamless? That, you know, you would think if you're going to stop at 509 at 1, then you're going to start at 509 at the next one and continue on that way. So...
They should, you know, you're very meticulous. That's really great. They should actually be seamless, and I have a feeling it may be because of rounding that we've gone through. So, unfortunately, I think we should check that.
Okay. I would agree.
We can adjust those.
Yeah, we can certainly.
And the fact that they're close suggests to me that we might have missed some rounding in there.
Okay. Then, I just want to check these tabs, make sure, some of these are, that's a comment. I have a question about this fee for, on 14 of 35, creek exception. I think you've answered the question in your presentation. It's interesting to me that we're dropping in the cost from about $3,400 for the creek exception fee to, quick math, what is that, nine, about $1,900. And perhaps somebody from staff can tell us a little bit about what creek exception is. Myself, and we can discuss this as a council later, but my inclination on it would be, we don't want to really, you know, our creek policies would be that we don't want people building in the creek, we don't want exceptions to be easy to come by, including the cost. But you said we can't use these necessarily, except up to the maximum, as a punishable offense, if you will, but...
Maybe that's a question for staff because she didn't certainly make that choice. She just gave us the numbers, right?
Right.
Certainly, but I will take the opportunity just to say one brief thing, 15 seconds, which is that we did find throughout many of these departments, and you see this a lot in public works as well, that the old fee schedule was old and that there actually are areas of fee decreases that we discussed with the departments and seem to be a product of improved systems, improved efficiencies in the work. And it's certainly one wherever we see a fee decrease. I mean, to be honest with you, as a fee consultant, we go back and really question that with the departments.
Can I keep her up there for one more question?
Oh, yeah. I didn't know if you wanted...
Question to debate.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sure, no problem.
And then, the, I was having a hard time understanding the working of the heritage tree removal. That's 20 of 35, page 20 of 35. What it is you're recommending because of just maybe the explanation of it, $140 deposit, 300 for replacement trees, so on and so forth, and then, looks like we're going to some kind of flat 226. Mr. Royce had the same question, so. Good with your answer.
Okay. And again, and staff may be more eloquent on this point, but this is another one that we did spend some time with the department on, and I believe, frankly, that deposit system is just simply not really working here in the community. I mean, it's the effort to collect deposits and then have to refund them, and there's really nothing sort of, and I'm sorry, I'm looking over here at staff. I don't know that that's something that's actually happening with great frequency. So, there is a recommendation here to just sort of get rid of this deposit system and charge a flat fee anytime those two activities come up. And then, the flat fee based on the cost of service would just be, if we were to stick with that ceiling, $226.
Okay. Well, certainly, staff could also comment on that when they come up. And Mr. Mayor, I suppose if maybe she wants to stay there for, I don't want to do your job.
I don't mind getting, I mean, I don't mind sitting down.
They don't mind getting up and down. I'd like to go question by question. Why don't we get, Chris, is this your area or who's? I'm not, I don't mean to pick on you. Oh, Deborah, thank you. If you could speak to those two questions, did you get them? Thank you so much, Ms. Nelson.
Deborah Nelson, Planning Manager. I believe the first one was creek exception. And what we've looked at is our experience in administering these requests for creek exceptions, and mostly, we...
Can you, excuse me, can you give us a little definition of what creek exception is first and then...
There is a 25-foot setback required for properties that are on a creek as opposed to a lesser setback requirement in other parcels. Creek exceptions often come up when someone wants to do a deck into that 25-foot. We discourage that kind of activity at the counter. So, we don't actually process a permit. We say, "That's not something that we could support, so therefore, we would discourage you from even applying." So, we think we're minimizing the number of creek exception requests. Then, when we do get one, the $1,800 is basically eight hours of work. And that's kind of typical because there is a lot of negotiation in that kind of request.
Okay. And a second question?
The second one was regarding trees. It is a very, very cumbersome process with the deposits. It's expensive to take the money and then reimburse it. And what we find is, people actually are very compliant with planting a new tree. So, we would, we're actually, as practice, kind of changing that too. We are now allowing people to come with their own arborist report, and we're just more working with people, recognizing the community likes trees, wants to save trees, but also recognizing that if we set a cumbersome process, we're not going to get compliance. And we really want people to save their trees, take out the ones that are dead, plant new ones, and so it just more reflects the way we work.
So, then, the 226 covers reviewing the arborist report, reviewing the planting...
That's correct. It's about an hour done.
Excuse me?
It's about an hour of work.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. We may have you again, but thank you. You're back. Questions, Mr. Growcott?
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Royce?
Yeah, well, first of all, there's a lot of work here, but more importantly, it's really good work. I really appreciate the thoroughness and helping support the direction of coming up with some very complicated cost figures to recover a fair and a reasonable and an actual cost recovery of what it costs to provide these services. So, thank you very, very much to you and your team. Two questions I have here on just the, when I look at the master fee schedule that the customer's going to actually see, they actually see a fee and they see an overhead rate for general plan. I kind of understand that, and that's a fairly large number. But then, there's a real small item called the technology fee. And you went through all of the full cost bases, and fully burden includes all that overhead and payroll and IT and admin and management, and yet, why is the technology fee there? To me, it's kind of like a small irritant. In fact, when I think of technology fee, I think it should be a credit because technology promotes efficiency, but so why is that item separated out?
Practical reason. And I would just conceptually agree with you. As a fee consultant, I hate surcharges for that very reason. I feel like things should be wrapped in, but the technology fee that's proposed here is based on something very specific. It's based on your prospective investment in permit systems, permit tracking systems, which would benefit building, planning, and the engineering work that's done within public works. It's a capital investment in... investment in that system. It's tacked on as a specific discrete item, simply so that it can be segregated and spent solely on that purpose. If we, we can certainly sort of wrap it in and bury it into the fee, there would be administrative work then to just make sure that those funds are set aside. But we could certainly say, you know, add 1.9%, you know, to every fee, but then there needs to be a reconciliation done. This way, they can be tracked, you can track them, the funds are actually used for the purpose in which we're saying they're collected.
So my response, I'd like later for the council to consider, because it is such a small figure, and we've done so much work on so many other costs. There's a lot of other capital costs included in all this stuff, too, that we amortize and so forth, to just have a fee and the overhead to simplify it. Second question would be, in fact, it's really a question whether or not you could provide some help or guidance. And it's maybe a two-part question, but to see if you could help us out with. With your other cities and clients that you provide help with on all this costing information, do you get involved in one of two areas? One would be kind of the new trends of financial services of, you know, now that you have all these fees, how in the heck are you going to charge them? You got cash and check, but now there's credit card, debit card, PayPal. Just the overall, you know, again, new, efficient processes that are new financial services that have business controls and efficiencies to how to retrieve those fees, for one. And then the second question of that would be, do you see cities implementing a minimum charge amount? As an example, the police department has an accident report. We can't charge more than $2, so we charge two. But my question is, why even charge two? Sometimes if it's less than a certain amount, don't charge. So can you provide any guidance? And if your answer is you can't, it's going to be two questions for staff. But as an independent consultant, can you help in those two areas regarding how to collect the fees using the latest and a minimum charge?
So I do have to ask for clarification on the first part of your question, which was the accuracy of collecting fees. Are you talking specifically about what kind of systems might be out there to help you? Because one thing I will say is, just piggybacking on your technology fee, having a permit tracking system that's up to date and functioning the way that staff needs it to function, I can tell you from experience in working with development review functions, that that type of good system greatly improves the accuracy of fee collection.
So I'm looking beyond the system. I'm looking at the actual collection of how, if I have a deck put on and I pay a fee, how does the city get its money?
At the counter. At the counter, through the actual department that's applying the fee. You don't have a...
Right. But what it's getting at is, do you have any recommendations? Have you seen it any other places? I apologize.
No, that's fine. Good.
Whether it's cash, check, PayPal, computers, any opinion? Or is it just everybody does it the way they want to do it?
Yeah, I don't have...
And you don't have an opinion?
I don't have an opinion on that, but I can tell you what I observe.
That's fine.
That's fine. Oh, okay.
I can tell you what I observe, which is checks, credit cards. That's what I've seen. I can tell you that when I talk to developer stakeholders, they prefer the credit card approach, because most people are sitting there getting a check, and then they come down to the counter, and you tell them it's 10 cents more, and they've got to run back and get a check. I mean, that's what I hear out in the community. So the preference is the credit, they want to come in with the Amex card.
And then the minimum charge, you see companies, I mean, cities...
Minimum charges, I would say, you know, not for police reports. You'd be surprised how much those $2 fees can kind of add up. So, you know, I actually don't even, I don't really encounter that. Certainly, if it's an activity that you're currently charging for, even if it's small like that, I mean, if you have the systems in place to collect it, I rarely see agencies shy away from that. I do see agencies shy away from the nickel and dime, and if that's like, okay, we're already providing a service. And, because sometimes you get wrapped up in these fee studies of what else can we charge for? And believe me, this list of 291 activities started out a lot longer at the beginning of the study, and you just start throwing things off the list, because like, is it even worth it for us to recover that? There are some minimum fees sprinkled out in here, though. I mean, where there are things that are based on hourly rates, where it's just, you're going to pay for a half hour of time or a quarter hour of time regardless, because, you know, nothing gets done in less than 10 minutes. So that's certainly where it becomes, it's just a factor of the time involved, that you can document a minimum fee. And that's what we look for in the ceiling.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
My turn. Lucky you. In the report, it says, if we adopt a free fee schedule, it would increase fees approximately 7% net increase, approximately $150,000. It's counterintuitive to me, but I'm sure you're probably right, if that's the numbers, and that's the question, because some of these are going up 400%, 300%, 200%. Now, some are going down, I realize that. So what you're saying is, is that we're collecting about $2.1 million approximately, and you're saying all this, even though some of these are up 300, 40% or whatever else, is going to mean a 7% increase and about 150, if the activity level was the same, which may or may not, you know, be the case. But at least you put those caveats. Are you sticking with those numbers, or?
We, yeah, we get really cagey with respect to projecting revenue on these types of services, because, I mean, we just cannot predict, not just in development revenues, as you know, but also in how these fees and other factors outside of our control might affect demand for services.
Well, I understand. I'm just saying, if we had the same amount, that's what...
So what I'm saying is that, you know, I recognize that we're sort of coming in in the middle of your budget process, and a number has been thrown out of about, you know, hoping that in the budget process, you get about $150,000 or so in revenue, based in increased revenue. So off of current conditions or past recent conditions, I can substantiate at least that number, but I am really hesitant to tell agencies to rely on more revenue than that.
I'm not asking for that.
Or inflexible expenditures.
I'm just saying that my counterintuitive brain, it's not right. It's incorrect, because it only is a 7% increase.
Many of the activities where you see very large fee increases are very rare activities. So actually, some of the things that are very frequent are being raised slightly.
It has to be that way, because otherwise...
Yeah. You also see, I mean, I just want to point out, the public work schedule, you take in a good amount of fee revenue from encroachment permits, and some of those actually are coming down, just because of the way that the systems have evolved. So that's another contributing factor. Just calibrating it to the cost of service results in increases and decreases. There are about 40, of the 291 activities we were looking at, about 40 of them are positively increasing. But there are a good amount of them that we are restructuring, such that the range of the fee that you could be exposed to, because we're making the fees more variable in nature. If you're on the low end, you're probably going to pay a lower fee.
I got it.
If you're on the high end, you're going to pay more.
Because you're restructuring, I can understand.
Improve equity, so.
Okay.
But we're willing to substantiate the amount that you've been planning for in your budget.
I just wanted to make sure that you were on that part. That's the only question I had at this point. There may be some others later on. This is a public hearing. So is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on any of these items, or have any questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll...
Close public hearing.
All right. It's been moved to close public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Moving, seconded to close the public hearing. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Passes. So gentlemen, what would you like to do here?
Mr. Mayor, I had, I guess, one point of, we're discussing fees, so I wanted to get a feel from the council about this. I was looking that currently leagues are not charged a fee. We charge a per kid, per season, but leagues are not charged. Considering that's a big chunk, I'd just like some discussion on why.
Would you like Mr. Long to...
I would love that.
Mr. Long? Did I see Mr. Long here?
He's hiding.
Hiding. Would you, is your question, would league fee be on top of the individual fee, or...
I guess so.
Instead, in lieu of, or?
It is zero today.
For the league.
Why is it zero? Versus, just picking up one, if I'm going to have a picnic in the top lot, it is $78. But if I want to run around all year on a soccer field, it's $33. So just some discussion of why we made those decisions.
Doug Long, Parks and Recreation Director. League fees are somewhat different. Leagues are generally, when we collect fees for leagues, it's because they're being administered by the Parks and Recreation Department. So we have an adult basketball league, softball leagues, and they actually pay league fees. The programs for youth sports are generally run by their specific organization. So all the labor and the organization, administrative costs, they carry that burden. The per player fee is, you can consider it kind of an impact fee on the fields. This is a way to generate revenue, to rehabilitate the fields, or take care of any capital costs associated with those fields.
Great. Thank you.
Chair, Mr. Royce.
Doug, while you're there, too, my question is, of course, I noticed that there is soft, the softball fees are 15, baseball's 33, and soccer's 38. My issue, even though I'm a lover of soccer and coached it several years, I'm familiar on how hard wear and tear of soccer is on a field. I mean, with soccer, you have 22 kids that are running, except the goalies, 20 kids that are running around the entire time. It's usually in offseason where the field's a little more damp and weathered, so it gets torn up more. With baseball, you have a kind of a pitcher and a batter, and once in a while, there's a hit. Although, there's more maintenance with the infield. But just generally, I would just, my feel is that soccer is really tough on our fields. And yet, I see a $38 charge versus, yeah, 15 slash 35 for softball, baseball. Do, what's the reason? Isn't, should there be more discrepancy in wear and tear, and in impact on how much it takes for us to restore and maintain fields?
That certainly could be used as a formulation determining what the fees are. What we did instead, understanding that there's kind of a tipping point with the fees charged to the different sports organizations, that if it gets too high, they're afraid that people are not going to participate. So what we did was, we actually looked at, we kind of worked it in reverse. We, I looked at a figure we would think we could get to in terms of maintenance on the fields, particularly at Highlands Fields, presented that to the sports groups, and said, this is the, this is kind of your impact on the field. So soccer, when considering all the hours that were reserved, they actually reserve half that, half the time. Baseball, 32%, 15% for soccer, I mean softball, and just 3% for camps. That's how it was assigned. So then, what we did was, you took $175,000, 50% of that, that's 87.5, and we divided that amongst the number of players that were in soccer, and that's how we came up with $38. So there's...
There are a lot more players, too, yeah.
Yes, there's a lot more players.
That makes a big difference.
Exactly, to share the burden of cost.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Excellent.
One other quick question, Mr. Mayor?
There's more.
Not for Doug, I think you're...
Oh, thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
The question actually came up around, at various points in times, we have abandonments of right-of-way, or something like that. So I wasn't certain if there was a fee associated with the preparation of the documents and the maintenance for abandoning something here. And if it's in here, I didn't see it.
Mr. Wile, could you come up for that? Thank you. Sorry to keep you guys bouncing up and down, but, oh, quite all right. Robert Wile, Public Works Director. And there is a, there was a fee, and there still is a fee. It's on page 38 of 39, I believe, on the, just the master schedule. At the very bottom of that page, under miscellaneous. So the, is it, okay, 34 in your version. So it's abandonment of R slash W right-of-way or easement, $778 plus actual surveyor charges, and we would collect a $500 deposit for those surveyor charges. So...
38 of 39.
Yeah.
Where are we? I'm sorry.
It's 38 of 39.
I don't have 38.
Public Works fees.
It's when, it's the last group.
So, Mr. Wile, just to follow up. We had heard from Ms. Nelson regarding the deposits issue, and here you've got yet another deposit. Is that a structure, you want to continue with this?
Yes, it is. In this case, in this case, it has been working. We, I suppose somewhat different is that you've got somebody with, we don't do these as much. And somebody's taking out a tree, maybe it's, we didn't talk about it, but it just seems to work for us administratively. I don't see a way around it, because we do need a surveyor to check the fee. We could come up with a real flat number for this, because it is variable, depending on how many lots and how big the assignment is. So it really was unavoidable to collect a deposit for the surveyor charges.
Understood. Mr. Mayor, the, and thank you, Mr. Wile, the motivation behind this is, the city is actually giving something up, and I had spoken to our city attorney that another agency has actually started to enact a fee, that every time they do an abandonment, there's an additional fee that goes into a sidewalk fund for sidewalk repair and things of that nature. It's something I'd like to have explored, that as we do abandonments, the city is giving up right-of-way or some other, some other benefit. There ought to be some benefit coming to the city beyond cost repair, or cost recovery. So I'd put that out as something that I'd like to explore. And I...
Okay.
Yeah, I like that. Good idea.
We usually get about, what, 10 of those a year? Do we get, yeah, just to put it in perspective.
Understood.
Yeah, that's fine, though. That's a good point. So gentlemen, what do you want to do on the fee schedule? Yeah, Ms. Grocott, yes, sir?
Yeah, before discussion, I realized I did have one other question.
Sure.
And that's for staff. I was following through on the community development planning fees, and I could see that there's an architectural review for, like, major and minor additions and so forth, sod changes. And then, and that's on page 14 of 35. And then you jump over to 15 of 35, and there's, again, residential design review, new home, first floor, second floor. And then, if you jump over to, let's see, page 17 of 35, again, there's fees for addition first floor, addition second floor. And what I'm trying to understand is the reason there's the three. It seems like projects, are projects getting reviewed three times, or what? Why is there three opportunities for collecting fees?
And the lucky winner is Ms. Nelson.
We have commercial design review and residential design review that goes to a design review committee, and those tend to cost more. We also realize that people do additions, and we have a staff-level review where the cost to perform that work are lesser. So we have tried to have a number of fees, so that we're not charging too much to some people, because it represents an average fee. The fee schedule is based on an average fee. So we tried to put more fees in the architectural review category.
So there's not, so I'm misunderstanding this. There's not three, like, if you brought in one project, there's not three opportunities to capture fees? There's just one?
No, no. These would apply to different kinds of projects.
Okay, got it. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, we have this in front of us. What would we like to do?
Mr. Mayor, move adoption of resolution number 2009.
Can I, 36, comments here first?
Comments, turn, more after, whatever.
We can have a motion, and then discussion.
Yeah, sure. I'll move the adoption of resolution number 2009 dash...
36.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, authorizing amendments to fee schedule for certain city services.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, moved in second. Discussion, Mr. Royce.
Yeah, I have, let's see, three points here, I think. One, first of all, is just a comment or a recommendation. Actually, there was an article in the Mercury News this morning, "Taking Steps Towards the Paperless Office at Last." And it's more of a compliment to our IT department and Christine. There is a lot of costs where people come in, and they want a budget report, or minutes from last year, or information. And a lot of it now is electronic, which, and a lot of it's on the web. And so we are able to provide instant access, anyplace anybody is in the world, to electronic information and reports. So thank you for doing that. I would like also, just to continue the step towards a green city. It talks about in the article that paper and pulp is the second largest user of energy and water, and the third largest contributor of pollution. I think when someone wants Xerox copies, I think we need to question that. We should be able to email them a PDF file. If they do want paper, we could say, maybe there's a PC and a printer out in the office there, but we're not going to print. there, but we're not going to print copies. I'm being exaggerated a little bit, but I really, really would like to make us a green city, get rid of the paper, and do as much as we can with no paper, and still satisfy the requirements of making our legal documents available to people. So that's the comment. Two questions or comments that I had when I went through the study is, and this is a question probably for Al or Chris in our building department, and just the permits that people get and so forth. There are some areas where the fees aren't actually staying the same, like water heater fees are staying at eighty-two dollars, but there's deck fees and temporary banners and tree removals that are going up quite a bit. And a lot of times, I ask or talking to people around the city about water heaters, and I said, "Did you get a permit for that?" They go, "Well, why? Do I need a permit for a water heater?" And I have no clue, but I would suspect that, you know, a lot of people, there's a few that don't, but there's a lot of people that just don't realize for a small deck or a water heater, or an AC system, or a hot tub, and all these things that we charge fees for, that we're charging fees for the honest people who know the information, but a lot of people don't know. And I just exercise some caution or some recommendations on education, but also some caution where we're raising deck fees from forty-nine dollars to two-hundred-and-twenty-six, or tree removal from one-forty-one plus the deposit. Getting rid of the deposit, by the way, is a great idea, because there's a lot of accounting work that goes on trying to track that. But tree removal from one-hundred-and-forty-one to four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. I just want to, I have a concern that there are a few of these items that I would like to still keep a fee, but keep them reasonable to really encourage compliance. We know, many of you know, you know, a water heater seems like a simple thing, and the gas hookup may be simple, but the carbon monoxide exhaust out of that isn't hooked up right, you could have serious injury to a family. So I would like to go back, and, you know, without going into the detail here, maybe leave it up to Chris and his team, to go back and soften some of these, some of the ones that I've mentioned, keep them very reasonable. We don't totally recover, but to really encourage compliance on some very important safety issues that are part of the building area.
With all due respect, to push back a little bit, I mean, I would like to hear Chris or Al explain to me, I'm sure they went over every one of these lines, or Deborah, and there was a reason behind all this stuff, and I don't mean you to go through forty of them, Chris, but just, maybe just a couple that he mentioned. I'm sure you did a priority, and why, just in a couple of generalities, I don't need twenty of them.
All right, yeah. Chris Valley Building Official. I'm happy to talk about water heater permits. It's my passion. You, you mentioned a good point, though, in keeping them reasonable. I think it was about four years ago, the fee for water heater was one-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars, and it, we suddenly weren't issuing water heater permits, or that many. And so, that fee was brought back to the prior fee schedules amount, and I can't remember what it was. I think at the time, it might have been seventy-three. And so now, it's proposed, I believe, at eighty-two, plus, in the mid-eighties. To keep it reasonable and to keep people coming in and getting water heater permits, we've, to date, we have five-hundred-and-eighty-six permits that we process, sixty of which are water heaters. So they're still coming in to get water heaters. There's new energy requirements for water heaters that we need to look at, so there's still value to us going out and looking at water heaters. But to answer your concern, we have kept the fee, in our mind, reasonable and to keep people still getting permits.
And I guess the general question is, you looked at every one of these things that had a fee, and you felt that, even though, I don't know which one you just quoted, one-forty to four-twenty, or whatever one it was, whatever it was, you looked at it and felt still that four-twenty was still reasonable in this, I don't know, which one you just said? You just said one of them.
Decks from forty-nine to two-twenty-six.
Okay, that's fine. Forty-nine to two-twenty-six, or whatever. But you looked at that, and you realized that two-twenty-six probably is a better number as opposed to forty-nine or whatever.
Actually, we're somewhat crossing planning and building fees with your questions. I was here to address the water heater permit question, sorry.
Deck, uh, fee is with-
Sorry, sorry, Chris.
There you go. Well, thank you.
There actually is a building permit required for decks when they're a certain height, but the deck permit that's two-twenty-six really has to do with the coverage calculation in the code. And so, planners have to look at decks. And people are very passionate about their decks. We have lots of conversations. So we think the one-twenty-six, an hour time, represents the average time we spend with people. The trees, again, we're trying to simplify that whole process. We had a fee for the arborist, a fee for us, and a fee for this deposit, and we said, "Let's just make this a whole lot simpler and go with one fee," and, but we, you know, we could reduce it if you felt that way, because it does, it's also one of those that benefits the community as a whole, if we have a tree ordinance that we enforce.
Yeah. So while you're there, can I ask you a question on the tree ordinance? Because I'm very passionate about keeping our trees in town. The rate has gone up from one-hundred-and-forty, plus the deposit which they get back, to four-hundred, I think when you add all the fees, it's four-hundred-and-seventy-five. I noticed the tree removal is one of the few items, line items, I think there's only one other line item, where it actually also shows a fee or penalty for noncompliance. In other words, if you cut a tree down without a permit, which is nine-hundred-and-three dollars. So can you comment on, I mean, if I got a tree in my backyard, and it costs me four-seventy-five for a permit, or I could do it on a weekend, or a limb every month, and not get caught, it's going to cost me nine-hundred, is that a good mix between a permit and a penalty? Or should there be more discrepancy between those two?
Yes, I think there should. And also, we would like to bring forward kind of a comprehensive review. We have permits for trees that, and I'll use a personal example, I had a fifty-year-old apple tree last year in my yard that died, and we took it out over the weekend. The City of San Carlos ordinance would have required me to get a permit for that. I don't think you intend, well, we'll ask that question, we'll bring forward, what are the trees that you want to save based on their girth, their type, and what are those that people can do regular yard maintenance and just show us that the tree is dead? So maybe what we want to talk about is, what's a fee that's reasonable in the interim, and then we'll come forward with a process that's a lot less cumbersome.
Yeah, I think for tonight's discussion, I really think we need to look at the global picture, the bigger picture. And I think every one of the departments, if, once this is all disseminated out to everybody, could look and say, you know, maybe that wasn't the greatest idea we had in May, maybe we need to fix this. And we can all, Mr. Rubens, we can go and adjust these, right? So it's not like it's, once it's here, it's cast in stone.
Well, you can adjust it, have another hearing like this, and you can go below the fee study.
Exactly, and go from there. So I just want to make sure we get other bites of the apple on this stuff.
So let me go through my last item, and then try to adjust now, and wait till later. And my last item is, there's two categories. One is, we have some fees that have gone up quite a bit for block parties, to one-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and to reserve park space sometimes, the, like, tiny-tots area in the playground, or, you know, various parts of, many of our parks and wrecks that have fields. And while I do understand, you know, there is a cost associated with maintaining these tables, and buying them, and cutting the grass, and so forth, I just do get concerned sometimes when I talk to several citizens that we're just charging for everything. And when you charge for a block party, it's only one-hundred-and-fifty dollars, but for the people who put the party on for twenty-five families, they all have to, you know, kick in their five or six bucks each. And at the block party, after a glass of wine, and towards the end of the evening, they talk about everything going on, and pretty soon, someone brings up the city, and they say, "That damn city made us pay one-hundred-and-fifty dollars to have this block party. It's ridiculous." And they say that. And so, I think sometimes, even though the accounting and the costing and fully burden really, really makes sense, I think we're being foolish in charging everything. And the harm on our reputation, and our reputation's good, maybe that's harsh, too harsh of a word, but the irritant that we could become to, you know, someone who wants to have a first birthday party in the park, that's going to charge him seventy-eight bucks or something, or a block party, I mean, you just kind of tick our citizens off. And it's the city charging, and it's council that approved the charging. And so, I just think that there is just a little bit of softening here that we need. I think the other areas that I've always been concerned on, there's a banner across Laurel that we raised the rate quite a bit here, and it's all our great nonprofit organizations. It's Qantas, and Rotary, and Lions Club, and Sister Cities, and the Chamber, all these people that build community, and they don't have any money, or not very much, and you're charging them. And you charge them for a special event fee. And of course, if you charge them, the city has to spend money on a special event fee, and it takes admin time and forms and paper. And so, you can see, I'm excited about this. So I would like on that motion to accept ninety-nine percent what I see here, but I would like to just go back and provide a little bit of heart, a little bit of recognition of our nonprofit organizations, a little bit about the kid's birthday party in the park, and just not charge for a few items, and just be a good, a good city staff and a good city council, and not fool with a fee. So that's my recommendation.
Well, I, you know, I mean, I think what, if you, certain members of the council, I mean, this, we could go over, we could spend hours-
Yeah, I don't want to go through your line.
Well, gee, thank you, but we won't be. But, I mean, you know, on Mr. Grocott's area, he works in a certain area, Mr. Ahmad, I'm sure has certain areas, and I have certain areas. And I think if we have specific questions and specific points that we'd like to make, I think we need to make the list of them, speak to Mr. Weiss about it, and talk to department heads, and see what the thing is, and if we need to bring it back, then we should bring it back. But I think, I mean, we can pick this stuff out, it's pretty easy to do, gee, you know, this is too high, or that's not high enough, or whatever, but let's look at the bigger picture here. And this, again, is not going to be in concrete. We can move and adjust these. We did it for solar fees a while back, we can do it for all kinds of things. So if you've got specific ones that are driving you crazy, make a list of them, and let's talk to Mark Weiss, let's talk to Park and Rec, whatever we need to do, and we'll do it.
So my rebuttal, and I'll end, I won't say anything else, I hope, will be that if we approve this, we're going to be charging block party fees, and it's not going to change. We're not going to have time to talk about it in a month or three months. I really do think we can trust staff to go back and soften this a little bit, if we get some consensus from the group.
Through the chair, I mean, what you have before you is the staff recommendation. And we have gone through these fees, one by one, by one, by one, as the mayor indicated. If you, as a council, want to lower fees in any of these areas, but we need to do it specifically, and we need to know exactly which one of the fees the council wants us to lower. I mean, for staff to come back and soften them, and, I mean, it's hard for us to read that without actually hearing from the council as to which fees are troublesome to you, and which ones you would like to subsidize at a greater rate.
And that's why I was making the point, Mr. Weiss, with your buttressing, is that if you have a list of things Mr. Grocott may, you may, Mr. Ahmad does, let's bring them back, and let's talk about it.
Right now, or?
We can't go over, we're not going to go over one-hundred-and-seventy different items here.
When are we going to?
Whenever you want, but not, but-
Right now.
Let's do it now.
Want to talk about it?
When I- I was expecting to do this tonight, to Mr. Weiss's comment.
Can we go page by page?
Well, no, but I-
Okay.
You know, like I said, I concentrated on a certain area.
I understand. Do you have a list of?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Do you have a list?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Then let's go over.
That's what I came prepared to do.
Okay, that's fine. Let's go over one by one, we'll vote on each one.
I do have a question that's a little bit of technical nature. I did ask about this seamless issue, and if the consultant's going to go back and look at her numbers and make some adjustments so that it is seamless, can we, if we clear everything else up tonight, can we adopt this with the understanding that some adjustments may be made? A few dollars a year?
Can we do that, because some of their math may be deficient?
I was kind of double-checking some of that math, and council member Grocott's right, there is some rounding on some of those. And it'd be best for the ordinance if the intent is to have it seamless, to, again, have the exact numbers. It's a few dollars off on some of them, but they don't actually, you could be at one graduated rate, and then the next rate is slightly lower when you start at the next rate, so I saw that.
Now, what is your recommendation on this, then?
On that particular item?
Not that item, but on any of the roundings, there may be other roundings in here. Are you saying we should vote on this and approve it, and then saying, but with the caveat to go fix the roundings?
Well, that's just on one category of items, so I think we'd like to have it be, and I'll let the city manager speak on how we'd like to approach it, but the, timing-wise, I mean, we'd like to have the, this cost recovery ordinance to be as accurate as possible. It doesn't have to be, the rounding doesn't have to be addressed, it's not mandatory, as long as you're under the total amount, and the recommended fees are below what the cost study says, is the cost of providing the service for the particular items that council member Grocott's talking about. You could come back, that would be an option. It's really just, if you want it to be graduated, that's a policy decision, and we should fix that tonight or before you actually-
We wouldn't be able to. We'd have to go through five hundred pages to try to figure out how much rounding we didn't, the consultant didn't make, right?
I thought it was just one category, the area of the building permits.
I understand, but who knows how many others are out there?
I mean, it appeared, though, that we were, the rounding errors seem to be within a few cents to a couple of dollars. And so, in some cases, you might have a fee that goes up to five-oh-five, and the next category starts at five-oh-one. If that's important to the council, then we would have to go back and make sure that it was seamless, and we'd bring it back for you to adopt.
So we can't approve it and say, "Go fix the seamless." Can't say, "Make it seamless."
The resolution set up-
Okay, we can't do that.
I mean, if that issue is that critical to the council-
I understand.
-to have it that seamless, then-
Through the chair?
Yes.
Don't we, we introduce an ordinance, and it has thirty days' hearing, right? So is, doesn't that-
But I was mistaken, it's a resolution, I misspoke. But there is a statutory requirement that it be published-
Yes.
Similar to an ordinance.
Okay.
We're trying to grapple with, the resolution has schedules attached that are precise. And so, we're trying to grapple with how to best describe it so you can move forward. And I prefer to have the numbers to be the right numbers that you've approved at the public hearing.
But honestly, they should have been, quite honestly. But anyway, that's another one.
Mr. Mayor, we can, we can tonight give staff direction by agreeing to certain items, how much, if we want to make adjustments, and then they can bring back a final with all those adjustments and corrections.
We can make, but, I mean, honestly, if we want to have that, I mean, I'll take your side on, if there's one, there's more than one. And I didn't go through each one and do the math, you know, there's lots-
Neither, I just found one and said, "I bet you there's others."
But that concerns me, if you're going to be consistent, then we should, they should all be right.
That's true.
You know, so that the thing is flawed, if you want to do it that way. So, I mean, like I said, I'll take your, but I'm not going to just do one. It's in my, I mean, my vote, will be, we'll either do them all, so they'll all come back, it'll be correct, or we just say, "Well, it's just part of the thing," and there might be a few dollars off, as Mr. Weiss said, or a dollar or two off, which I can live with, quite honestly, but I understand where your point is coming from.
Right, and I see this as, there's two areas. There's corrections of this rounding of math.
Right.
That's one thing, that's just fixing the math. And then there, the other area is where we have input, we're making, you know, policy decisions, like Mr. Royce talked about. I made some notes as he was speaking, and I wanted to enter into that discussion, so that's where I'm ready to go.
That's fine, you're right, there are two different parts. So I think maybe the first thing we should decide right off the get-go is, do we want to make this, you know, consistent so that it's rounded properly, or do we want to say, for a couple of dollars that may go, or a few cents one way or the other, that we just say it's just, it's a mathematical quirk, and we'll just let it go? I mean, that's a really important thing, because all this is going back, then, at least in my mind, to make it absolutely perfect?
I just don't know how big the quirks are.
I don't either.
Yeah, if they're just a few bucks.
But you found one, and you felt like it possibly should be changed, and if there's one, there's more than one in here, in my mind.
Yeah, I agree with you.
At least, I'd be, I wouldn't be confident that there weren't more than one. It's just like an audit. If you're doing an audit-
Right.
And you find a mistake, there you go. So like I said, I personally don't think we need to do that. Personally, I would vote for the fact that rounding is, it's close enough because of a dollar here, but I'll, whatever the consensus is of the council-
I can support that.
I don't know what, you know, if you want to-
Or which?
No, that the accuracy is good enough. I'm with that. We're within a horseshoe toss, I'm good with it.
I mean, your point was taken, well-taken, but I think it appears that we're willing to go with a dollar or two off. So, and then, now we'll move to your next point, which I think is way more germane to the discussion of changing some of the items, again, with Mr. Royce, and maybe Mr. Ahmad has some too.
Why don't I first hit on the ones that Mr. Royce has already talked about, discussion-wise? I would agree with him on block party and banners across the road, because it's being, to me, that's being penny wise and pound foolish. You're charging for something, and yet, you know, we have certain areas where we're building community, and when we build community, we have less crime, we have a safer community, we have a more friendly community, and that's a benefit to us. So, with block parties, I would have a suggestion that, I know we had some discussion about deposits, not having deposits, but I think if we just take a deposit, then the message to the block party folks is, if the city has to come out and do cleanup, if the police have to come out because people got rowdy and got drunk, anything goes wrong, we're keeping that deposit. Everything goes right, here's your money. And so I would like to see on the block party that we take the figure in here and just convert it to a deposit. Banners across the road, I, when I saw that, I agree with Mr. Royce, most of those banners are by the chamber or service clubs, and these are people who are trying to raise money for good causes, for student scholarships, et cetera, and for us to come along and charge them for things, I don't think is right. So I would nix the idea of charging for banners across the road.
Just for nonprofits?
Yeah, for nonprofits, yeah, if it's somebody that's doing something for a profit, that's a whole different ballgame. AT&amp;T wants to put a banner across the road, charge them. And so, I'll stop there, because those are, well, oh, there was one other.
You have a couple on your section?
Well, then, I have some of my own, but Mr. Royce also mentioned the decks, and what I noticed is if you go to that page, which is 16 of 35, you got decks, swimming pools, covered patios, and accessory structures, they're virtually all the same kind of problem that you're dealing with, which is coverage, and, you know, as far as planning issues. And I would like to see them, and the fees go from anywhere from 113 to 451. I would like some discussion from council, and we just come up with a fee that's the same for all of them, because they're essentially that, like I say, the same kind of project.
I'm sorry, I apologize, when you would say all of them, you're saying?
Decks, swimming pools, covered patio, and accessory structures.
Those four?
And I respect, you know, staff looked at, and, you know, I'm sure they had some discussion about it, but when you look at it from a user standpoint, you know, gee, I come in with an accessory structure one week, and it's this amount, and I come in with a swimming pool next week, and it's a different amount, and, I don't know, they just seem like all similar kind of deals. You're dealing with lot coverage, and that's pretty much it, so. You see where I am?
Yeah, I see exactly where you are. I mean, obviously, if we kicked it all up, nobody would want to pay the 451 for the swimming pool. There's two of them, 451, one's 226.
Yeah, accessory structures and covered patios are 451, swimming pool's 113, and the deck is 226.
Right, 226.
Maybe we just make them all 226 and call it a day. I don't know.
Okay, well, that's something that we can discuss.
Okay. You want me to throw the other ones out?
May as well.
I guess so.
All right, I'll throw the other ones out. Let me find them, they should be at my tabs here. The appeals to planning commission and appeals to city council, planning commission is 1412.
What's the page?
Oh, I'm sorry, 13 of 35.
13 of 35. Okay.
So the appeals to the planning commission are, if you add up the general plan surcharge and the tech fee, it's 1412. Appeals to city council is 1256. And I understand the concept of, you know, number one, I don't understand why they would be different in terms of how much time spent and staff time, but I guess there's something there. Myself, I would, just in terms of policy or concept, I'd rather see that switched, because if you're appealing to the planning commission, you know, it's the kind of thing where someone wants to build a house next to you, you don't like it, and you think the planning commission made the wrong decision on approving the project, so you appeal. If you can't work with your neighbors through that process, and you have to then go to the city council, it seems that's when it should cost you more money, not when you're going to the planning commission for appeal.
Can I answer that question?
Go ahead.
Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the order of appeal is you have to go to planning first, so all the paperwork and documentation is done. When you go to city council, a lot of that work has already been prepared, and that's, I believe, why the cost is lower, is that right?
Yes.
So that's why it's lower.
Okay, so I can understand, and I appreciate that, and I can understand why it would be lower in terms of the cost basis, but in terms of, you know, really what's going on, is, again, I can see appealing to the planning commission, trying to work through that process, neighbor to neighbor and so forth, with the planning commission involved in the appeal process. If you can't get through that and work something out, then to me, it's going to the, by the time it gets to us, you got a fight on your hands, it shouldn't be coming to us. There should have been something worked out long ago in the process. And so I'd like to see the amount just reversed, maybe the, so it would have to be, I guess, to accept the cost basis argument, maybe appeal to city council is 1256, and appeals to the planning commission is what it is existing, 1,003, just keep it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it, anything else?
Yeah, just, I think, one more, let's see. The first floor and second floor design review, and I'm finding, I'm looking for that. It's on page 15 of 35. So if you look at it, the residential design review for first floor, it totals 1426, it was 1,094, so it's gone up by about 325. The residential design review for second floor was, if you add up all those fees, 218, it's now 1,901, so it's gone down by 220. I don't know, just that one would think, a single-story addition, a lot of times when people end up doing single-story additions, it's because they don't quite have the money to bump up to the next level to go to second story. It's a lot simpler in terms of things that have to be looked at, because it's just setback generally, and lot coverage, you're not looking at height limits, you're not looking at, you know, daylight issues with neighbors and so forth. So why it would go up so dramatically is a question to me, it seems not quite right.
Any cost of first related to?
I'm fine with the total for the second floor, but for the first floor, it seems like it's gone up quite a bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any others?
That's it.
Okay, Mr. Royce?
So just in summary, the ones, the four that I've mentioned is the block party, the banners you have. The other two I've mentioned here in my speech was special event fees.
What page would that be on?
Well, I'm in a different section here. Special event fees is on page 14 of 34 on the next section, D, and its total of recommended fee is 226 plus 12, 238, from 195, I'm recommending to do away with special permit fees since, for nonprofit organizations.
1434, special events, I see it, I see, it's 226, okay.
There's actually a minor and a major there.
Were you talking about the major or the minor?
Which one are you speaking about, or both?
Both.
Okay. And you'd like to have those go down, or stay the same, or?
Zero.
Zero for everything, okay?
The other, fourth item I mentioned, and this, I think we do need to think hard, because there's revenue here, and there is cost, but it is the picnic areas, is that what I would describe, the reservations for our, most of our parks have a picnic area, and people are able to reserve the table for birthday parties and so forth, and I believe that.
Where's that?
And, again, that would be under Park and Rec, under picnic sites, on page 25 of 34. It's recommended is $78 per event, and again, I would recommend zero on that.
Mr. Royce, a question, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would suggest on something like that also, that maybe we look at a deposit, because then Parks and Rec could go out the next day, you know, on Monday, check, see if there's, everything's in good order, if it is, you get your deposit back, if not, we keep your deposit.
The only thing I would indicate, I mean, we start to create the same issue, then, as we have with trees. I mean, it becomes an administrative burden in order to set up that kind of a process. And then, obviously, the council is aware that any time that we are eliminating fees, that we're eliminating revenue to the city, that, we're simply subsidizing, the cost doesn't go away, we're simply subsidizing those activities through, you know, and one thing we could talk about is whether or not the city actually wants to create a payment on behalf, you know, establish a fund, and pay those fees on behalf of groups. It's a concept that I've used in other locations, it certainly then would make the council aware of what those costs are, and we would establish a budget where we actually then would incur the cost, pay the cost, and yet, you know, set a line item budget in our future budget document in order to accommodate that. I don't know what the fiscal impact of all the changes that you're talking about tonight, we'll try to address that, but we will need to establish the exact fee that you are proposing for each of these items, so that when we're reducing that, or eliminating those fees, that we know specifically in the fee schedule what we've done.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Ahmad?
None.
Okay. So, we've got seven, it looks like, seven possible changes to this, I guess we should just take them one at a time, and see what folks want to do. The first one is the block party, and I think it's what, $150 you mentioned, Mr. Royce? I can't remember, I didn't get that.
It's 131 now, it's 150 recommended.
Okay, 150?
150.
And you want it to go to zero?
Yes.
Okay. So, I disagree with that, but that's why we're here. So, any other comments on that one, maybe we can make a motion, or see if there's enough votes for it?
So I'd like to make a motion to eliminate any fees for block parties.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, well, it seems that fails for lack of a second.
I would like to make, the reason I didn't say anything, is because I would actually like to make a motion that we eliminate fees for block parties, but do take a deposit for a block party.
Do you want to amend your, Mr. Royce, you want to amend yours? Okay, so we want to put a deposit of 150?
Yep, yes, and I'll second that motion.
Okay. So, Ms. Wall, do you have that?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, just to bring you back to where you are procedurally.
Please bring me back to where I am.
There is a motion and a second to approve.
Oh, that's right, you're right.
The full fee schedule, so I just want to make sure you're, what you're doing now is really pulling each other to see if there's any amendments to that motion.
You're right, so these are amendments to the original motion. Thank you, Mr. Rubens, thank God you're here. Okay, so there's a motion to an amendment, making the block party item instead of a payment, a deposit, which could be fully or partially refunded to the people, depending on what's going on.
Exactly.
Okay, is there any more discussion on this item? All right, would you please do a roll call on this, please?
Mr. Rubens, should we do roll call on each, or shall we just do a?
Well, they're going to have to do one on each amendment, because there's going to be, I think, because, maybe all over the board on this.
It's up to the chair how he wants to approach the.
All right, we'll do it, we'll do it fine, if you don't want to do that way, that'll be fine, we'll just do ayes or nays, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay?
Nay.
So, motion does not pass, it's two to two. All right, moving on to the second one, banners. What would you like to do on banners?
So I'd like to make a motion to eliminate all fees for hanging of banners on Laurel Street in front of the Yonkines.
For nonprofits?
For nonprofit organizations.
Okay, second. What is that, how much is that now, or is the fee?
That banners is going from 150 to 288, or 280.
Okay, and you want to make it zero?
Yeah.
Okay?
For nonprofits.
For nonprofits, okay, and do we need a definition, and you know, this is going to sound like an attorney, how about the definition of a nonprofit?
Point of information, only nonprofits are allowed to apply for the banner.
Okay, thank you. That's why you're here. Thank you very much, Mr. Wall, great.
Yeah, we, that's a, we can't differentiate between different kinds of nonprofits.
No, I understand, Mr. Wall answered the question, I was just trying to identify whether it had to be a 501(c)(3), or, you know, or Jimmy's little lemonade stand. Okay, that's a nonprofit. All right, so, on this item, there's been a motion and second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Closed? No, so three to one, please? Okay, and we move on to item three, which would be the four fees that Mr., I believe Mr. Grocott mentioned, about swimming pools and coverages.
Special event fees, just to stay on Mr. Royce's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Menu, special event fees for nonprofits?
I'm sorry, what page would that on, Mr.?
That was on, I don't know.
That's a $200 fee.
I'm sorry, but what page was it on, I'm sorry?
Something of 34, I remember that.
Oh, I got it, just, okay, I have this in a certain order, but that's fine. We'll move down, we'll jump down to special events.
14 of 34.
Okay, 14 of 34, and you wanted to basically make this a zero?
Yes.
Okay.
And is that for major or minor?
Oh.
What's the difference?
I don't know.
Do we have a difference between major and minor, special event?
I mean, I'm guessing that hometown days is a major event, and?
Donna, let's get everybody up here.
Donna Dillard, Recreation Superintendent. Special events are listed in two categories, planning fields special events for businesses on private property, and Parks and Recreation field special events for on public property. Nonprofits typically, Deborah, correct me, go through Parks and Recreation. That fee is proposed $200 per event, currently it's 131 per event.
Well, you're, now you're, you're not even on the same page, unfortunately, Donna, that we're on, we're on a completely different event, we're on page 14 of 34, it says special event permits, minor and major.
That would be through the Planning Department.
Sorry.
And that's?
Yes.
Oh, I went to the wrong page, I'm sorry, I'm, let me go to, sorry, it's in two places. I want to go to Park and Rec.
Okay.
While she's there, can I ask, may I ask a question?
Sure.
So, for what you're dealing with is nonprofits or?
A special event, I'll give you an example, over the holidays, there was a little train in a parking lot in the downtown, that was a special event permit. We sometimes get one of the restaurants or bars asking us for, once a month, we'd like to do some music out in our parking lot, that's a special event, and it.
So that's different than what?
There is some city service that may be required also.
So I'm not referring to any of that, so I'm back to, I'm sorry to correct it, I'm on page 25 of 34, council, this is under Park and Rec, not under Community Services, but under Parker Rec, it's listed as special event permit, it actually shows a $200 per event, or if it's a repeat request, I assume that's like an annual event that they do every year, a repeat, it would be $125. My recommendation, again, is to waive the fee for special events.
Okay, apologize, Donna, we were on the wrong page to begin with, you were right.
Thank you.
Sorry. Okay, so, do we understand it's on page 25 of 34, the proposed fee is $200, and Mr. Royce would like to make a motion to make this zero?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second, with discussion, please.
Okay, if there's a second, what, any discussion on this?
Yeah, this is used exclusively, then, by nonprofits? Do we have those who come to us to use the parks who are?
I'm sorry, Donna, could you come up again, I apologize. I assume there are other people besides nonprofits who this would apply to?
Currently, this fee applies to nonprofits.
Just nonprofits?
Only?
What about, what about Joe Smith Construction or something? Who wants to have a party or?
We don't feel that.
You, that goes back?
We do not do for-profit events that would impact the community, just nonprofit, community-wide events.
Very good.
So, I don't need, so what about a birthday party?
In your own home, is your business?
Not in my own home. I can't use the park for a birthday party.
You can rent a picnic site.
But that's as much as it goes?
Yes.
Okay, so I can't like rent a baseball diamond along with it and?
No.
I can't do that.
No, it's first come, first served for the ball dyming.
I'm sorry. Okay, fine. I'm just asking because I'm just trying to understand so that everybody understands. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
No? Okay, that does not pass. All right.
And the last one?
Let's see, you had 25 of 34 again, which would be the.
We're on the same page for picnic sites on the top page.
Right, the picnic page, okay.
25, there are five sites there that were $25 to 45 or just 85 per event. It's a, it's a $78 per event. These are the picnic tables in the various Parks and Groves and so forth in the park, and I would recommend that we would waive that fee with a deposit.
Okay. That's a motion. Is there a second? Okay, I don't hear a second for that motion, so that will not go. All right? So, let's go back up, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Grocott, 16 of 35 is the next one I have, which was your, which was the comment about the having decks, swimming pools, covered patio, accessory structure. You'd like those fees to all be similar?
Yes.
Do you have a number in mind?
Uh, I think the average would probably be 226, yes.
So, you'd like to make them all 226?
Yes.
Okay. And that's your motion? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion to make on page 16 of 35, the fee for, are you, what about the ancillary surcharges and technology? You're leaving those fees intact?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's just the original fee?
Yes.
For decks, swimming pools, covered patio and accessory structure, make them all 226?
That's right.
Question?
Through the chair, just for clarification, the swimming pool item, the cost study says $113, so that one we can only charge up to the 113, but the others seem to be all below the 226 that's recommended.
So, then, what we're really talking about is reducing covered patio and accessory structures to equal decks?
Okay, so what we would, we amend the motion to make it, make covered patios and accessory structures 226 is basically to simplify it?
Yes, that's right.
Okay? All right? There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to make covered patios and accessory structures the fee be 226. Is, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? Okay, that fails. 1335.
13 of 35?
1335 appeals. Planning, we had appeals. You wanted to rearrange some of the costs on the, on the appeals from planning to Planning Commission and City Council, 1335?
Right, I wanted to keep the appeals to Planning Commission to be the same as it is currently, which is, if you add it up, it's 1,060.
60?
Yeah.
And both, also the City Council and Planning Commission, both the same? Keep them all the same?
Uh, no, I'm fine with the, by lowering the planning appeal to Planning Commission to 1,060, then your appeal to City Council is a greater number.
Greater number, okay. So, what you basically want to do is, just, again, I apologize for just repeating it to make sure we get it right.
Yeah.
Make it 1,003 plus 57, 1,060. Keep it basically the same current fee it is.
Yeah, they could, they could adjust the underlying numbers, the fee and the general plan surcharge, but the total should come out to 160.
What about the?
Or 1,060.
So, in other words, just force the technology fee out of that numbers, those numbers there?
That'd be fine.
Okay, so, total of 1,060, however we want to work it to get all the surcharge fee and the technology fee in.
Right.
All right?
Exactly.
So, that's your motion, Mr., is there a second to that motion? Okay, I'm not hearing a second, so that would fail.
Okay.
Okay, and the next one is cost the first floor, which would be 15 of 35?
Yes.
Pardon me, 15 dash 35.
Right.
Um, review of the first floor, and I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't write the details down for that, Mr. Grocott.
Well, with that one, the, the first floor fee went up by $325 and the second floor one went down by 220. It seems counterintuitive. Like I said, most folks that have determined to do a single floor addition is because they can't afford to, you know, really go further, which is to do second floor, and yet, you know, our fee structure is going in the opposite direction of what people are trying to do, save a little money.
Okay, all right. So, what would you like that fee to be on the, on the first floor?
If it was, again, remain close to what it is, to, you know, I would say 1,100.
1,100, okay.
Total, yeah, so total out to 1,100.
So, right now, it's about 1094, so you just?
Well, right now, it's about 1094. It's recommended to be 1426.
Right.
So, yes.
1094 is what?
Go back to, well, you know, 1094, 1,100 or?
Well, you picked the number.
1,100.
Okay, 1,100 it is. All right. So, you'd like the residential redesign review on page 13, pardon me, 1535 to be, go from 1094 to 1,100?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
All right. Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? Okay. Fails also, two to two. So, Ms. Wallen, would you?
Yes.
Please repeat the ones that we did so we'll be absolutely sure we voted, or what passed and what didn't pass?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The one that did pass was the banner.
Okay.
Elimination of all fees for nonprofits.
Okay, and that was the only one?
That was the only one.
All right? Okay. All right, so, we're now back to the top motion that we have on the floor to approve the fee schedule, and is there any more discussion on that item? All right, hearing none, we have the motion. Can we have a roll call on that, please?
Yes, Councilmember Ma?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Lewis is absent. Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
Gentlemen, thank you. I appreciate your persistence in pushing me on that, in that direction so that we went over all the items that you had. I appreciate that. All right. Okay, so, 8a is done. And move on to 9a, unfinished business report to council on the 2009 economic development plan update.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Mark Suwicky, Economic Development Manager. Here to report to you on the 2009 update to the economic development plan. Answer any questions you have and gather your feedback. I had questioned why this item was listed on the agenda as unfinished business, but I quickly came to realize it was most appropriate given that the business of economic development is never finished.
Never finished.
And most all of our objectives and strategies in the plan are essentially ongoing and long-term projects. As you know, the city adopted its economic development plan in 2007 based on input from the community, city staff, EDAC and the council. It was designed as a three-year business plan for improving the climate for economic activity, encouraging development opportunities and ultimately growing our tax base. Since economic development is an evolving endeavor, we have committed to updating the plan annually in order to review the progress we have achieved, to revise and add initiatives that reflect the community's vision and to be responsive to market conditions. A 2008 update was prepared last year, and in your packet is the 2009 update prepared by our economic consultant, RSG. As indicated in the staff report in the update, accomplishments over the past year include making steady progress on many objectives, including working with the owner and developer of the proposed Transit Village, selecting a development partner to explore the potential of, for Wheeler Plaza redevelopment, working with property owners and developers on a potential hotel at the landmark site, negotiating a potential sale and development of the city-owned property at Holly and Industrial, readying previously planned traffic and circulation projects or exploring alternatives for the Holly and 101 interchange, the intersections of Holly and Industrial, Britton and Industrial and the El Camino corridor, preparing a draft marketing strategy and selecting a professional marketing and branding consultant to help us implement it, and conducting economic development outreach luncheons with different business sectors to brainstorm ideas on how together we can stimulate economic activity. For the next fiscal year, we expect to make more tangible progress on the Transit Village, Wheeler Plaza, capital improvement projects, the marketing and branding strategy. In addition, we hope to explore reinstatement of the facade improvement program and adopt the next five-year implementation plan for the redevelopment agency as is statutorily required. That five-year plan is expected to reflect both the economic development plan projects in this plan update as well as to apply budget amounts for these projects over the next five years. Staff recommends council accept the 2009 economic development update report. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the report, gather your comments and suggestions, and if desired, make any changes you'd like into a revised version of the 2009 update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suwicky. Questions from Mr. Suwicky? Mr. Ahmad?
Mr. Suwicky, I know that we've had some outreach to the Harbor Industrial area along with the Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to get a brief update. How's that going and any, any information coming back from the HIA regarding some things we may be able to do better?
Not the HIA in particular, but we've also done outreach luncheons with the building, construction, materials and supply business sector and the sporting goods and recreation sector. In each case, we've, we've sort of done a brainstorming session, got their feedback on, on things that we could do together with them, what they could do on their own. The, the path for the economic development partnership is to follow up with key members of those groups, of those groups to see who might be champions for those groups and bring them together to, to help drive some of their suggestions forward. Not all of them are things that the city could do. Some of them are things that they might want to do on their own and to, to own their own sector and the, and the economic development that would go on there. But these are things that we've been kicking around in the economic development partnership, how to best pursue that. At the same time, we're, we're pursuing different sectors such as the downtown business sector we hope to do probably in early July at this point. We are also incorporating a lot of those ideas into the, into the marketing strategy, which is still a draft at this point until we actually hire a professional firm to help us finalize it. So, we're gathering those ideas and input to, to put into implementation.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I've been able to take part in two of the outreach meetings. I thought they were extremely successful and want to, want to acknowledge the good work of, of staff and encourage any way I can.
Okay, great. Questions, Mr. Grocott?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question regarding Wheeler Plaza and where, where that is.
We selected the developer Silverstone Communities Development Partner. We have drafted an exclusive right to negotiate or exclusive negotiating agreement which would, you know, make them our, our partner, give us, provide the expectations we have of them, the expectations they have of the city in order to move forward. The first phase of, of that would be what, what we've termed a listening tour, basically to go to the property owners, business owners, residents and the greater community to figure out what might work on that site until they actually bring forward any plan. We want, we want to find out what's, what's possible. They would need to go back and then figure out whether that's possible or not. But that should be coming back to you, I would say, within weeks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Royce?
Yeah, just like to say a great report. I've learned a few things reading it and read it twice. It's excellent. Want to make sure, I assume, is this on, on the web yet for public?
Not until you accept it would we, well, it's, it's part of the, part of the packet materials, but we would put it up once.
That'd be great, because I think a lot of our citizens would be interested to see how much is going on and, and we're planning for, and not that we're doing the work, you're doing the work, but thank you.
And, Mr. Suwicky, I echo everyone on the council that you guys are doing a great job. I was fortunate enough to go to all three of the outreach ones, and I know we're gonna have some more, and it, it's good because we get to hear directly from folks who have the businesses in town, whatever section or area they are, and they come up with some great ideas and some great brainstorming stuff, so, thank you.
All right, so I think we just heard that. Any other on that? All right?
Mr. Mayor, move to accept the 2009 economic development update.
Need a motion to that, Mr. Rubens?
Simple motion, accept the report.
I'm sorry, you're right, Mr. Royce. Go ahead.
Move to accept the 2009 economic development update.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay, move on to item 10, 10a, new business, consideration of adopting a resolution declaring that fiscal hardship will exist if additional local property tax funds are seized and additional unfunded mandates are adopted by the state of California. Mr. Mora?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As the mayor indicated, you have before you a resolution declaring a fiscal hardship will exist if the state of California takes additional property tax money from the city of San Carlos as described under Proposition 1a. Staff has researched this, and depending on who you listen to, the loss to San Carlos is somewhere between 833,000 and just over a million dollars. To date, 75 cities across the state have adopted such a resolution. I should mention to council, last week, the legislative analyst added an additional wrinkle to this process. One of his, as you know, he, he provides additional recommendations to the legislature when reviewing the governor's budget proposals, and Mac Taylor, who is the new LAO, suggested, among other options, that the legislature has is they could proportionally take more money from cities that have not adopted this resolution than cities that have. So, probably an additional incentive for you tonight to adopt this. I should also mention that the San Carlos version of this resolution, which is attached, we've added some additional detail in terms of how this particular process would affect San Carlos. I should also mention that to date, two of the gubernatorial candidates have come out against taking any money from cities and counties, that being Tom Campbell, a Republican candidate, and Gavin Newsom, a Democratic candidate. There's also been some cities that have taken a position that they will not endorse any of the gubernatorial candidates unless they take the same pledge, and that obviously is up to the five of you as to whether you wish to do that on an individual basis. But with all of that in mind, staff would recommend that council adopt the attached resolution as suggested. Any questions? Be free.
Questions for Mr. Mora? Mr. Grocott?
Yes. Yes. Many of the assembly members and Senate, state senate members are former council members like Ira Ruskin and Joe Smithian and Jerry Hill. Do we have an idea of how many come from that background? The reason I ask the question is, you know, if we're gonna go to the effort to pass this and everything, how many people are we speaking to who have that kind of background?
To answer council member Grokot's question, actually, an increasing number. Ever since term limits passed, one of the phenomena that has occurred, as we've had more turnover in the legislature, is more and more of the legislators, as you suggest, are in fact former county supervisors and council members. I should mention also that council member Ahmad and I were on the League's Legislative Day event a couple of weeks ago. We asked about this question, and I guess maybe not surprisingly, we heard from Senator Smithian and I believe it's either Senator Assemblyman Bell from Santa Fe, that this would be very hard for them to make cuts in the state budget, that it'd be much easier to do things like taking money from us. So, I think we're kind of disappointed that they feel that way. And I think the League's, League California City Strategy, and also the California Redevelopment Agency Strategy, is to nevertheless point out in very clear terms what this means to the various cities that are involved, as far as if we lose this money and we have to further tap into our emergency reserves to offset this.
So, what you're, with your answer, you're saying in, in some sense, it doesn't even matter how many came from that kind of background, because there are some who came from that background who maybe have forgotten it.
I think that's a very accurate statement, yes.
I had a quick question. The, the laws would come directly from our general fund?
That's correct.
Okay, not our redevelopment fund?
That's correct.
They could also tap that, though, too.
Well, the redevelopment is an interesting situation. As you, council probably recalls, the state attempted to take over $300,000 from redevelopment earlier this year. The California Redevelopment Agency, or Association, excuse me, the CRA sued the state and won. The judge ruled that taking that kind of money was unconstitutional. So, right now, we're in a holding pattern. However, the state has indicated they might still take redevelopment money. The other thing that's under consideration, too, by the way, which would not directly affect us, is the legislative analyst has also suggested that the state could take up to 25% of the property tax from so-called fee-based utility districts. This would be water and sewer districts that charge rates, the theory being they could make it up in rates. They may also pursue various public safety and other special districts that have been exempt from ERAF all these years. So, there are some other places that they would hit, wouldn't affect us.
You're looking for money. Okay, any more discussion on this item? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move. I was just going to make a question. Mr. Mayor, move to adopt resolution number 2009 dash?
Thirty-seven.
Resolution finding a severe fiscal hardship will exist if additional city property tax funds are seized and additional unfunded mandates are adopted by the state of California.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in seconded. Any more discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mora. Okay. Okay, it's 10A and 10B, discussion and approval of annual work plans from city boards and commissions. And you're back.
I'm back. Council will recall that last year, for the first time, we asked each of the city commissions and boards to submit to the city council prior to the start of the fiscal year, a commission work plan. This is a substitute for the previous program we used to have where the commissions and the council would jointly meet and discuss informally goals. There was a feeling on the part of the council during one of your strategic retreats that this would be a better format. This year is somewhat unique, and we're now in the second year, and you'll note in your packet that some of the commissions have not only listed their proposed work plan items for the coming 2009-10 fiscal year, but they've also reported to you on how much progress they've made in 2008 and '09. So, the purpose tonight is for you to review the commission's proposed work plans to give staff and the commissions any feedback on items that they're proposing to undertake in terms of if you'd like to see them go in a slightly different direction. And I would also note that in, in a number of cases, the tasks that the commissions have outlined in many cases are a holdover from last year, so you'll see that there's a number of common themes from the prior year. In most cases, the commissions have five or six tasks. There's one commission, the Economic Development Advisory Commission, a very ambitious group, has 11 tasks for their 12 months, so obviously they'll be very busy. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Gentlemen, no questions? Okay. Comments?
Just a couple of thoughts, Mr. Mora. One is, under Parks and Rec funding strategies, I agree with all that. It does comment, it says expand support of the Parks and Rec, the foundation. I just want to make sure that we are, also include a little bit more depth on just keeping that whole momentum of our foundation, how it's going to be operated and, and so forth. It's a very key funding tool for Parks and Rec, and so, you know, a little bit beyond just expand support. I think it's really, needs some attention within funding. And my second of two thoughts are, under Arts and Culture, item three, where it uses the verb to encourage new and existing commercial development to incorporate public art. I would also like to maybe even go a step further and, and ask them to look at, maybe even to implement a fee structure. I know other cities have, especially with development of some new projects that we have going on in town, a percentage, it's a very small percentage, start off very, very small, but a percentage of the construction cost that goes towards sculpture or art, public art and so forth within those things.
And I guess to, to council, or Vice Mayor Royce's point on that, we did have a meeting with Art and Culture, Donna Dillard, who's in the audience, staff's Art and Culture, and also Al Savay was there and myself, and I think the Art and Culture Commission, it's fair to say, grappled a little bit with that. On the one hand, I think in the perfect world, they'd like to flat out require public art in those fees, but given today's economy, they felt that maybe a better approach might be to liaison, if you will, with community development, find out when major developments, they use the example of Palo Alto Medical for, you know, among others, and 1,000 Laurel was to come in and maybe they could, I don't know, encourage them to either pay a fee or to put in art. So, that's something, that's, that's kind of the tension there, but certainly, I'm sure they'd be interested in any thoughts the council has about an art program, mandatory, voluntary, encourage, and that's where the word encourage, by the way, came from.
Well, I'm glad you talked about it, and that actually sounds better than what I just said. I'm glad they're thinking about that.
Okay. Any other comments? I'm sorry, Ms. Grokot.
Chair, just so that the message is, is maybe balanced, I, with all due respect to Mr. Royce, do not agree with that. I think that fees should be voluntary, and, and I, I don't know, there's, there's philosophical issues around funding art, and, you know, one man's art is another man's junk, so there's, there's some issues there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grokot. All right, if no more comments, if we'd have a motion to adopt the commission work plans for 2009-10?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt the commission work plans for 2009-2010 fiscal year.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved in seconded. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay. We now have six N, six J, and six L, so we'll start with six N, which is accept the recommended capital project options for fiscal year 2010 budget. Mr. Malpe?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and this actually is not an item to accept, but rather to provide direction to staff. So, there's really no action. This is, again, like our study session last week, it was just placed on the consent calendar by mistake, and let me end this. I'll give you just a brief presentation here. Actually, wish it could be a more robust presentation, but of all the aspects of our budget woes, they show, I think, most greatly here in our capital budget. Over the last couple of years, you can see the fund balances here, the blue one being the, the sewer fund, the, the only one that's really showing any significant growth, and of course, any of that growth would be contingent on future council actions in terms of raising fees for the SBW, or SBSA project, rather, and, and other fee-related activities of the sewer function. So, there'd be 218 hearings in the future and all that, but we're estimating here as part of the budget what the expenditures and revenues would be. Gas tax will continue to come in and be expended on related gas tax projects, primarily in the, the streets and infrastructure. The general fund is capital fund 25, and as you could see, this next year, '09-'10 will be the year that we exhaust fund 25 completely. In fact, we'll leave a grand total of 200, and that's not rounded to thousands, that's actually $269 in our general fund budget. And we'll get into a little more detail there, because we're only adding two projects this year. The Parks and Lou, the, that fund balance will drop significantly. That would be a result of the Synthetic Turf Field Project at Highlands. The RDA Capital Project Fund has sufficient funding, it has additional funding outside of Fund 83 from previous RDA bond proceeds that are in Fund 80, but haven't been assigned to specific RDA projects at this time. And then the Library Improvement Fund, which is primarily paid for by the tenants at the library, and that money set aside. It's not all bad news. We have managed to accomplish some things in the past. Just to give you an idea of some of the projects we've done, the Channel 27 Broadcasting improvements in this room, all paid for through Comcast grant money dedicated for this specific purpose, so not coming out of the general fund, not costing the taxpayers any money, costing the ratepayers of Comcast, but passed on to the city. The City Hall remodel, a project that was approved a couple of years ago and completed on the second floor, that project was approximately a quarter of a million dollars, but at the time it was approved, the city staff said, as a result of the project and the city's budget cuts, we would be eliminating a number of positions related to the project, that we would be able to reconsolidate services, combine some functions with the city clerk's office, and ultimately save money. To date, two years into this, we've already saved through having eliminated two positions in the department, two full-time positions, more than the project itself. So, in the future, we think the project will just become a net gain. The traffic signal went in at Chestnut, some storm drain and pump improvements and things of that nature, some enterprise-wide electronic commerce that we put in, the City Hall seat, heat valve project, and there's probably going to be, or there's not probably going to be, as there's no money, but there certainly is a need for additional improvements in the HVAC system in this aging building. And then the ERP payment manage, manager, manager software project that went in. CIP funding currently in this year's proposed budget, you could see here the projects that are currently underway, so that's, that's the top portion of the list there. These projects were begun. The capital budget, unlike the operating budget, isn't a single-year entity. You have projects that maybe were approved last year that are going to take several years to go through to completion. So, that's what's showing there. The only two new projects that are being proposed for the council coming out of Fund 25 this year would be the updates to zoning ordinance and the Loop and Way Median Island Improvement Stabilization Project. Just give you some indication of the gas tax fund. Again, this money coming in is primarily used for street sidewalk-related projects. This evening with us is our Public Works Director, Robert Wile, and our Parks and Recreation Director, Douglas Long, who can talk about any specific projects in greater detail when I'm finished here. Here's the, the CIP funding summary for the wastewater fund. As you can see, pretty much ongoing, system rehabilitation being the primary cost being proposed this next year. And again, as I mentioned, any future revenue growth that we're showing within the fund would be subject to Prop 218 hearing and the council approval of such fee increases. Some of the other funds, the Park and Lou, again, the primary or only project coming in '09-'10 being proposed is the Highland Field renovation of Synthetic Turf. There's, the RDA capital projects listed there, just a handful, the Holly Street US-101 interchange modification, improvements between Holly Street and Industrial, Britton Avenue widening, Alchemine Lighting landscaping, San Carlos Avenue, and then some minor maintenance-type projects at the library. The unfunded list, this is just a highlight of what's on the unfunded list. You'll see the full list contained within the budget document. I believe it totals between 50 and 60 million dollars right now. On it are a huge, huge list of potential projects. Some maybe could fall into the wish list, nice-to-have-want category. Others are actually very, very critical, and while '09-'10 hopefully isn't their time to come due, their time is coming and probably coming sooner than later, and we are going to have to find a way to pay for some of these things. This is the second, I think the final list that we've got here on that, just to give you some indication. That's my report. Again, as I said, there are other staff members here to speak to any specific items and projects that are being proposed. I wish we had a lot more to talk about tonight than we do, but unfortunately, it's rather Spartan capital budget that's being proposed, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Malpe or other staff members? Mr. Ahmad?
What do we do? No, no questions right now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, you can, you get another shot. I'll come back to you. Mr. Grokot?
Yeah, I primarily wanted to focus on one, one or two items. And that, that has to do with street, the first one anyways, has to do with street resurfacing, and we're, we're at 650 earlier in Mr. Wile's report. He talked about, you know, you have streets that are at the tipping point, and you don't want to let them, those streets go over to where they're in greater disrepair. And I'm just curious if there might be some adjustments we might be able to make to increase our, our spending on streets. When I, when I drive around town, I see some of the, especially some of the residential streets, like Magnolia, or if you get up where Mr. Grisilli lives, Crestview, especially you get on the steep part, it's just a quilt of patchwork. You know, there's some areas that really need some attention. I don't know if we could spend, take, I, I, one of the things I looked at here, and I'm just, you know, looking for a change, place to find money is the pedestrian improvement. I don't know what that project is. I know it's a cause that everybody's behind as we look for, you know, ways to encourage alternative modes of transportation around town, but on the other hand, if we let these roads or streets get in too great of disrepair, then it, it costs a lot more to reconstruct them in the long run.
I doubt we could use the 469, because I think that's under the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, so that's, yeah, that's.
So, there's virtually nowhere else?
Can't, I mean, just pointing out, that 469 is, is in and out.
Yeah, you know, if you were looking for additional money, one potential thought would be to look to Fund 25, and we, you know, might want to have some comments. I neglected to mention that Al Savay is also here, our Community Development Director. But we do have a zoning ordinance project, 150,000 being proposed for next year. If it's, you know, I don't know if that work, when that work is scheduled to begin, but possibly if it could be delayed until later in the year, maybe you could budget, you know, $75,000 for the first half of the year, and then keep your fingers crossed that you'll have some additional money that we can deliver in savings this year back to Fund 25, that you could complete that project in the second year.
A follow-up question on what I'm after, is there any areas, well, just in general, can we use RDA money on any kind of, you can't use it on maintenance kind of things, is that right, or what?
Yeah, I don't believe so. Yeah, it doesn't qualify for medical street maintenance type work.
Okay.
So, I, we're very, very limited here in our, in our choices.
Through the chair, I should also mention, I talked earlier about the potential state raids, and I'd emphasize again that the state may take our gas tax money for six to nine months, so you may not even have that 650.
And could you tell us, this, under Fund 25, the City Hall remodel, the first floor, 205, what's, what are we looking at there?
Those, and, and perhaps Mr. Savay wants to speak in a little more detail to this, but my understanding of the project is a lot of that work is really focused on the lobby area and facilitating.
Oh, that project we looked at?
Yeah, yeah, this came forward a few, maybe two months ago. And so, it's really related to circulation and things. Again, we eliminated the full-time receptionist position in the lobby, so we're trying to take one-time capital money and make some improvements to help the public that's not ongoing in nature. And then again, we save that money from that full-time position every year, so it becomes really a cost-savings project.
So, the only thing that you're identi, or not the only thing, but I, I guess the one thing that you're identifying is this updates to zoning ordinance.
That's correct. Really, everything else that's currently underway in Fund 25 is, is rather near completion, so I mean, there's not very much money there anyway, and it wouldn't make sense to turn off any of those projects where they're at right now. So, it's really just that Loop and Way Median project, which my understanding is that that's, that's potentially a critical project and a critical situation that if we don't address could, you know, quickly result in an even bigger project, and then, you know, possibly delaying the zoning ordinance. But again, I don't want to offer up somebody else's project without hearing from.
Just a couple of things through the chair on the zoning ordinance. I mean, one is after we get the general plan updated, we need to amend the zoning code to come into compliance and, and be consistent with the general plan, and so that's why it's here. Secondarily, there is, you know, there is a fee that we are assessing that will, over time, replenish the monies that we spend there, but we would recommend that we go ahead and get the zoning code updated. I know that there are some special areas, Councilmember Grokot, you had talked about the hillside ordinance, for example. GPAC had come up with a couple of additional special areas that they'd like to have us focus on. Now, whether or not that's included as part of our overall zoning code, or whether or not we pick one or two special ordinances that we want to expedite, but that's the kind of thing that those monies would be used for. If I, if I had, you know, if I was going to offer any ray of hope here, I mean, one is the revenue measure, obviously, but, but secondarily, you know, our plan historically has been at the end of the fiscal year, that we, we would hope to have some money that we haven't spent, and we would hope to be conservative with our revenue estimates, so that we would have a half million to a million dollars that we might be able to, in, in November, put into Fund 25. Now, in the last two years, we haven't been able to do that. We have been able to fund the one traffic signal, but because of the Lehman Brothers issue and because of the need to fund the Gatsby 45 requirements, we, we haven't been able to put monies in arrears at the end of the year into Fund 25, is what we had originally hoped to do. You know, this year, I would, I would like to offer a ray of hope that we might be able to do that, but then at the same time, I would remind the council that when we brought forward the operating budget, we are not funding the equipment replacement fund at the level that we should be funding it, and we still are not funding the Gatsby 45 obligation fully. And so, there, there is a need to continue to put monies that might be available for us at the end of the fiscal year towards those obligations, but there may be an opportunity to put some of those monies into Fund 25 to fund one or two of the projects that are on the unfunded list.
Okay. Any more questions, Mr. Grokot?
No more questions.
Okay, Mr. Royce?
Jeff, just noticed, so why are, like, general plan updates and, and zoning ordinances capital in nature versus, you know, your typical paving, pumps, turf type thing? Just understanding the concept here.
Yeah, you could potentially, I mean, you could, you could potentially budget them in a different way, but they're so infrequent that.
Useful life is over 20-year plan.
Yeah, you know, you're talking to, you know, these, the costs, you know, we're, we're bearing the cost right now over, you know, a three-year period with the general fund, but it's not likely that we'll see those costs again for 20 years.
And the last question I have, on the RDA activity, like Holly Street improvements, widening of Britton and so forth, I don't see any credits. All the developers, of course, as, as, as east and development goes in, there are mitigated, you know, factors and, and action that we've taken where developers will be paying for all this, and it'll be a net zero to less, I understand, like those things. So, where do we show, you know, we're showing the expense of those items, but what's kind of the cash flow, or when do we show the credit? the credits that the developers will pay on those items?
I couldn't cover part of that, and then I may need Rebecca Maldonado to back me up. But the, these traffic impact fee projects are being funded initially out of the redevelopment bond funds. So that's what you see on the expense side here.
Okay.
The traffic impact fee revenues will come in over time and actually kind of backfill the funds you spend out of those initial bond funds.
Okay.
We didn't, they're very difficult to estimate, those revenues. So I don't think they're really, Rebecca, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think they're really reflected in our five-year revenue estimate. In the past budget, we kind of showed them as a credit to that project, a revenue attributed to that, those projects directly. But that was difficult because if those revenues don't come in, I don't know if I have the money to actually implement the project. So now we're really treating those offline from the projects, we're spending the bond money, and then those traffic impact fee revenues will come in over time in a determinate time.
I didn't understand that. Thank you very much.
Okay. I do have one, any other questions at this time?
One.
I'm sorry?
One.
Go ahead.
Mr. Malpe, we're kind of looking at the trend on Fund 25 just cratering. Short of us actually getting one of those Nigerian letters to actually pay off, how are we supposed to get this fund back up?
I answer this every day, by the way.
I try to, considering I'm a person of high moral character and, you know, et cetera. At this point, we're looking at a significant number of capital projects. Let's assume a revenue measure actually works. I don't see that fund roaring back to be able to address that capital. Is this time to actually start talking about, is there a bonding vehicle? What other mechanisms are we going to have to address this capital infrastructure?
Well, you don't have very many, unfortunately. In the very, very short term, you could borrow money conceivably from the RDA or the other funds. You'd have to, the general fund would have to pay it back, or the other funds would have to pay it back. So, you know, that doesn't really work very well if you're talking about borrowing RDA money to, you know, pay for, the gas tax is going to pay back, because that's going to be a limited amount of revenue. Maybe in an emergency situation, that would, that would be what we would turn to. Of course, raising revenue comes to the top of the list. You have these ongoing capital needs that aren't going to go away. I mean, as these critical projects come due, and you find the money and you do them, or you delay them and they don't get done, other projects whose, you know, lifespan are five or six years out are going to continue to, you know, march through the ages and get closer and closer and come due as well. Or you just cut more severely into the types of programs and services that this city offers. You know, we talked earlier tonight about, you know, block parties and special events and those kinds of things. And it's very conceivable right now that, you know, those revenues will go away because those services could be potentially in jeopardy. You know, we may not be able to afford as a community to provide those kinds of nice-to-have-quality-of-life programs anymore because we need to pay for such things as, you know, sewer pumps and the infrastructure of the city. And, you know, Councilmember Grokot made an excellent point earlier in response to Public Works Director's pavement management presentation. You know, and we're falling behind, and we've known for a number of years now, almost a decade, that we've been falling behind. And now, you know, we're really sort of at the point where we're going to fall behind exponentially now from year to year, and you're really going to start to see cracks in the community. So you don't really have a lot of good choices. You know, as the city manager said, you know, the other day at the community meetings, you know, we can't, we can't print money like the feds, and we can't steal it like the state. So, you know, you have very limited options, and none of them are very attractive.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would, taking that to heart, what I would probably say is looking at our, at the list of unfunded capital projects that we have, and where our reserves are, I would like to see the council have, if you will, more of a strategic discussion, talking about a five- and 10-year horizon. When can we start to attack these, these projects? Where should our reserves be? And we really need to come up with a strategic discussion of how do we need to fund these? Because right now, I understand, we're economically in tough times, and we're reacting. But we also need to take some time to be proactive and figure out a strategy for St. Carlos.
I think that's something that we should have a specific, I mean, it's almost like, these are the unfunded ones, and it was, I'm sure you've rated them or ranked them anyway, Mr. Wile, but, you know, it's like, almost like a timeline of, okay, this needs to be done in 2008, or '09, or '10, et cetera, just like you said. I mean, the city of Burlingame just went through this with, they'd been postponing forever doing their sewers, and they finally had to pass a huge, I don't know how many hundreds, if it was 100 million, or 40, or 50, it was a huge bond that they eventually, and they got the community to come up with. But whether it's that way we do it, or if we save for any day, or however we're going to do it, I agree. You have to look at your, what your timeline is. So I'm sure you've already got a lot of the information already out there.
I just wanted to mention that the strategic, one of the strategic plan objectives for maintaining, enhancing the infrastructure is for me to come back to you with a format for inventorying your infrastructure. And the presentation you saw tonight about the pavement management program, the state of the streets, is a form of asset management. It's a model, a financial model. What does it take to keep this asset that's got so much invested in it in reasonable condition, serviceable condition? And that's the kind of format I want to bring back to you in a presentation at a later date.
Okay.
We were thinking about doing that tonight, but just looked like it was going to be too busy, too long, an evening already. But you'll be seeing more about that.
Thank you.
And that'll be an opportunity, I think, for the council to do some strategizing.
Now, this is not a public hearing, but I have a speaker card on, from Mr. Danny Stillion. Mr. Stillion, are you still here? Would you like to speak? I'd like to keep this to about two or three minutes, please, sir, if you could. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. I know that other citizens have spoken to you previously about the issue of flooding on Cedar Street, the south side. And it was my intention tonight to share vividly with you a 60-second video that I took slightly after the flooding reached its peak during the New Year's storm of 2008. This was after I spent a whole day trying to futilely keep the inadequate storm drains from being clogged, and then realized about halfway through the day that there's power lines over my head. And as a result, I stopped tending to those drains and started sandbagging in front of my house. So that's a line item in this measure. I applaud the council for considering this new study at 22,500. But I also am aware that there was a large engineering study that took place in 1998 verifying that that whole section of the White Oaks neighborhood is underserved by the existing infrastructure. And I implore you to carry out the study so that it's current, but move right into action. There's 15 homes that are at risk during several storms a year. This isn't a 100-year flood event that we're talking about. I know that you guys have probably been aware of this under other mayor's watch. And I think it's high time, even though funding is limited, to protect citizens' property. It's great to talk about birthday parties and banners over the streets, and I appreciate that there's a diverse range of issues that we have to consider, but this is property and public safety. I've given the URL to a YouTube link if you want to see vividly firsthand how bad that flooding is. I asked the clerk kindly to provide you with that link. You'll see in it another thing that I think should be a source of concern. I had to go out and try to keep people from driving at high speeds in front of our houses and tidal-waving floodwater into our garages. So you had citizens in conflict with one another. It wasn't my finest hour, but I'm trying to protect my home. And the police showed up, to their credit intermittently, but I realize they're spread so thin they can't be there all the time. And I'm almost finished here. I think the, the last point is that we really need to move into action here. We've been talking about streets tonight, and there's a lot of spider webbing on that whole south section of Cedar as well, because the floodwaters are undermining the integrity of the streets. So I know there's people here that have looked into this issue that are much more qualified than I am, but some cutoff venting on St. Francis and Kelton would mitigate this issue. I mean, it's basically coming straight down into Cedar, and we've got older folks on our street, we've got hearing impaired folks on our street. You basically cannot get out of our homes during these regular storms throughout the year. So it's a, it's a public safety issue. And I applaud you for taking another look at it from a study perspective, but I hope that we can, even in the dire straits of the budget situation, move to action. And thank you for the opportunity to speak with you again about this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Stillion, for your time. Okay, so we have 6N here. So what would you gentlemen like to do?
Direction.
Well, I think we have to provide direction. Is that basically it?
Yeah. Just direction. It'll come back as part of the full budget. So, yeah, if there aren't any other comments.
Do you have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just have a, I don't know, just a couple of comments that I think need to be stated, or at least I have the feeling to state them, the need to state them. And that is, you know, we're looking at the street resurfacing issue, and we are falling behind. And I just point this out so that, you know, we need to, as a council, we need to think about things as we do them, projects we take on and so forth. And I hear, you know, on occasion, the idea the scoot buses brought up. In fact, when we were interviewing people tonight, you know, that was brought up about, that was a project we had, and it went away. That was primarily funded by our gas tax. And at least in my mind, one of the reasons we've fallen behind is because we spent, for a number of years, about two years or whatever it was that project was in place, we spent gas tax money running a bus system in St. Carlos, and it hurt us. And I think we see that now. It's one of the reasons the streets are in the conditions that they're in, and we're going to have to play catch-up. And I would go further, and, you know, it's in this document, it's going to be in our budget. As someone who voted against the turf project, that's one of the reasons I voted against it, is because I'm looking at this number here where we're spending 23, $2.3 million on one project. And we know in the future we're going to have other projects that are going to come our way, where fields will need reconstruction or improvement. And it's going to be difficult to come up with the money because we, you know, it's all going into one, one project. So I appreciate your time in listening to me. Those are some concerns I have about past practices and, you know, the position it puts us in. Thank you.
Just as an aside, of course, none of us were there for suit, but that, you know, is historical. And on the field, I think, I think it's pretty well-known that we need to replace a field at Highlands. So again, when everyone keeps speaking about 2.3 and 2.4, I like to say it's 800,000 or 900,000. I mean, granted, it's a huge amount of money, but we would still end up having to spend a million five to build a regular field if we wanted to replace Highlands Field, which we're told needs to be done. So I just want to make sure we're all in perspective here.
And just a point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, we're looking at street resurfacing and.
That's parking wreck.
Pumps and things like that. And I think it is important because folks are confused.
Yeah.
That we're not making a choice between police and sidewalks and streets, and on a whim, putting.
Right.
A synthetic surface. Those are separate funds, and if I wanted to take those funds and move it to cops, I would probably be put in jail. So that's also a point that needs to be somewhat amplified.
We need to get that out. Okay, we went through 6N. 6J is, once I find it, resolution approving amended finance agreement with South Bayside System Authority, 2009 wastewater revenue bonds and capital improvements. Mr. Royce, I believe, brought this, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Grokot, I apologize. You both had questions about this, I think. So did you have questions for Mr. Wile about it?
Yes, I did. I was a little confused regarding, there's a paragraph in here that says, under fiscal implications, the second paragraph.
Mr. Grokot, could I interrupt you for just a moment?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I need to disqualify myself from this item. I think we had spoken about this before with regard to SBSA. I may have, I don't think that there's any conflict at this point, but I think it's appropriate that I disqualify myself from this item.
Okay.
So I'll step outside until we're done.
Well, you can sit in the audience, I think.
Actually, I think I have to physically leave the chair.
You have to physically leave.
You promise to come back, or?
Yeah, I will.
I have your coat. We'll hold your coat hostage.
A cup of coffee?
Can you, yeah, can you get us, anyway? Sorry, Mr. Grokot, go ahead.
Okay, so in this paragraph, under fiscal implications, it says that the current wastewater rate structure anticipates our obligations for the 2009 revenue bonds, and that the sewer rates starting in 09, 010 were increased to provide the additional revenue for the debt service. A blanket increase of 7% for all sewer service charges was approved, which will increase revenues by approximately 558 per year, sufficient to cover the debt service. But it doesn't go into the timeframe, and it doesn't seem to say that, well, once the debt service is taken care of, we'll then reduce the rates by 7%. It seems to indicate that they'll just stay up there. So if you could comment to that. And then the last paragraph talks about how additional rate increases will be needed starting in 010, 011 to provide the financing of the rest of the program. A preliminary estimate by SBA's, SBSA's financial consultant is that rates will need to increase 7% to 12% per year for multiple years to meet financing requirements. And again, it doesn't give exactly what the window is of, it just says for a multiple number of years. And then, once those increases have been put in place, do they anticipate, once the bond, bonds have been paid off, that, what happens to rates then?
Well, it is a 30-year bond program.
Okay.
So the, I mean, I wouldn't venture to say what, what the fiscal picture of the capital program or the wastewater fund would look like in 30 years from now, but theoretically, yeah, those rates could be rolled back at that point.
So the rate, so the answer is that these rate increases will have to stay in place for 30 years?
Correct.
Okay. And then the, the 7% to 12% that's mentioned in the last paragraph is on top of the already 7% increase.
That's correct. Right.
That we've made.
Yeah, this is.
Do you have any idea of a chart or something that tells us what that looks like?
It would take me a moment to set it up on the camera here.
We don't, I don't necessarily need it tonight, but can we get that? Can we, and actually, what I was saying to the mayor before the meeting on this item, the reason I wanted to pull it is because, you know, I don't really think we have much of a choice in approving this tonight. But to get a roadmap of what this looks like, based on this, even the verbiage that's in here.
Right. Yeah.
To do some kind of presentation to council, because I know Mr. Grisilli gets a good amount of this, I would assume, at the meetings.
Yeah.
But that leaves, you know, and it's hard for him to report back to council under council reports, we did this, we did that.
Right.
So getting something from staff on, you know, what's going on out there on the bay with this project would be a nice thing.
I agree. In fact, really, the wastewater fund has some major financial decisions coming to the council in spring of next year, because really, I think, when you, this time next year, by this time next year, you really will have to take a long-term look at these wastewater rates. And you'll have to look at this, this real large financial obligation for the wastewater revenue bonds, the rest of the program. Because really, this is just kind of a down payment, this first set of agreements. The rest of the program is about five times the size. So what I'm bringing, what I plan to bring to you over the next nine months is actually a sequence of information to help you with that financial decision. I want to have Dan Child come to talk to you about the capital program, overview of it. Of course, we're looking at our own wastewater collection system and how it's operated and maintained, and looking for efficiencies in that. We have the consultant that just started on that. And you'll be getting a report from that consultant in August, and then again in December. And we also want to look at how, you know, just as I talked about the state of the streets, want to look at the state of the sewers, and what kind of capital renewal we need. we need to invest on a regular basis. I think we're okay there, but I would like to get a better, more numerical look at that to you, if possible, in the next year. So I'm going to be bringing you a batch of information. Fortunately, you'll, you can put off this decision until next spring, you'll have a Prop 218 kind of ballot again on sewer rates, but that will be the long-term look at the, at the financial picture of the wastewater system, and I want to prepare you for that over time.
Well, and I would just add, if I may, Mr. Mayor, it's not, I'm not criticizing the way that you put it, but it's more the way I put it. I think we need to know as a council, and I think our ratepayers deserve to know.
Right, I agree.
And they need to see what this picture looks like.
Right, I agree.
A long-term, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to add, I asked actually the mayor just a few hours ago here before the meeting, too, wanting some information more. You know, this is $300 million, we're 15% of it. We're totally rebuilding the complex there and agree with, with Councilmember Grocott's thought on just understanding the money, setting some expectations, starting to communicate with our taxpayers. And the third item, again, was a discussion we had maybe four, six months ago about doing some education like we do with recycling, how we do the right things for what we put in our garbage. I think we need to do the right things for what goes down the drain. And so all of that is, is a very expensive but needed and important service that we provide our citizens.
I totally agree. In fact, just, all the residents in San Carlos will soon be getting a mailer that comes out from the Association of Bay Area Governments and it's kind of being sewer smart. And in fact, inside that little card, we have a customized little card that says how to, who to contact in San Carlos. So we're also tuning up our web information in the public site about sewer, and we're coming up with a little door hanger we can leave in a neighborhood when we have a sewer problem that may be related to what people are flushing down the sewers, give them a little more public education.
Excellent. And just as, just as a final note, you know, all the, all the things that we do at SBSA, I always make sure, and again, I've probably been a little bit remiss in reporting back more detail than I should have, but all the things that we do are not done independently. The technical group, Mr. Wobbe and all the other public works directors always get together with Dan Child down there, and it's a, it's a joint decision on all these things and these dollars, and they get involved in a lot more detail than we're bringing out about what things need to get done in dollars. So just to give someone an assurance to council members as well as to the public, that this is not done in a vacuum. It's not some great organization out there that's not commenting or not working with our city staff. We're, we're day-to-day involved, and when I make decisions down there, I consult staff every time, every month, I go down and say, okay, this is coming up. Robert, have you talked to him? Mark, have you, you know, what's the financialification, I'll just give you the side. But I appreciate you coming back to us with, with the items that these gentlemen brought up. So with that, I would ask for a, let's see, where are we here? Six J, to adopt a resolution for these financing items.
So I would move to adopt the resolution approving amended financing agreement with South Bayside System Authority for 2009 wastewater revenue bonds for capital improvements.
What, that was 2009? Ms. Boland, which number?
It is 33.
Thirty-three.
I'll second that.
All right, so moved and seconded to approve the resolution. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, 300. All right, moving on, six L, which is beautiful downtown authorized agreement with San Carlos Little League regarding concession stand at Arguello Park. Mr. Royce?
Yes, the reason I pulled this, let me give you some background first. The greater east side and L'Oreal Park, some of the neighbors, Scott Marshers, who was here earlier, and Christie from our fire department, she's a new person in charge. I believe her title is something along, or one of her responsibilities is disaster preparedness for both San Carlos and Belmont, are working on some plans on having some supplies, gloves, shovels, medical supplies, waters and so forth, in case there is an earthquake, a disaster. And the concept is that these would be located in a park because a lot of times when there is a disaster and fires, the park is sometimes one of the best places that people will actually come together after something like that. When I saw this, you're wondering, what's the relationship? Well, what I did is I called actually Doug Fry, who transferred me to Christie, and I said, if we're building a 15-by-20-foot concession stand at Arguello Park, another park, you know, I don't know what it would cost, but I'm not sure if it would cost that much more to add another five feet to it and have a 5-by-15 foot with a separate door and wall for storage, for disaster preparedness and supplies. What do you think of that idea? And in our discussion, her first comments was, I think that's exceptional idea. She did agree that the parks could be one of the best places. If we do this at, at Arguello and L'Oreal, it does something there. At Burden, we have the Qantas Building, maybe there's some storage capabilities there. At Highlands, there's already a concession stand, maybe there's a way to, to move a few things around there. And pretty soon, you start thinking, again, this is not something that you do all in one year, but I'm looking at, at if we are going to build a concession stands for five feet more of wall on two walls and a little bit more roof, we start knocking our way down into being more prepared for the big one or whatever can happen. The complexity is, of course, I don't want to delay the project, it's totally being funded by the Little League, so, but my only recommendation, I just wanted to get the feel from the rest of the council, does it make sense to, to work with Christie, to work with Little League and maybe to do some rough estimates on what it would cost, the incremental cost, to provide some, some ample storage at a field where we're going to be building a new concession stand?
Well, the only question I have, and Doug can speak to this, I don't know how far along the project we are. I mean, quite honestly, it's, can't, can't, I don't think be against the idea, but I don't have any idea where we are in the, in the plans and the costs and everything else in this thing.
Yeah, this project has been shovel-ready for quite some time.
Oh, really?
So we're going through the processes now of getting the final agreement in terms of, you know, building and maintaining the facility itself. So it's been designed, the designs have been approved, permits have been granted, so we're well, well down the road with this particular project.
Okay. A day late, a dollar short, huh?
Yeah, it's, it's not a bad idea and it's something we can investigate. We know that we do have some storage there. It was a compromise, actually, this came up, this design came before the Parks and Recreation Commission, and they recommended that they, they shrink the size of the facility itself, it just didn't fit in, a bigger facility didn't fit in with the park itself. Although there is some storage, and we can just investigate the possibility of creating some store, some storage at the existing maintenance building at Arguello for that particular purpose.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Good point. Okay, thank you, Mr. Boland. All right, so I'll make, I'll accept the motion to authorize agreeing with the San Carlos Little League regarding the concession stand?
Move to accept item six L.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
I moved and seconded to accept item six L. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, so gentlemen, I don't believe there's anything left on the agenda. So this meeting is adjourned.